At Perry Middle School, so it's like one of those great stories that you couldn't hardly write a story better than that.
That's true.
So we're blessed.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I just wanted to let you know we're just about to go live.
Okay, thank you.
I will let you know as soon as we are, just a moment.
How's everyone doing tonight?
We're good. How about you?
Good, good.
Okay, we are now live. We're just waiting for our city manager to come on. You may start the meeting, Mayor Serta.
Okay. Okay, so we are ready to begin tonight's Gardena City Council meeting for Tuesday, March the 8th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Mayor Serta.
Here.
Mayor Protan Tanaka.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Cascanian.
Present.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
All members of the council are present, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So tonight we need to go into closed session, but um... Let's see, Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from closed session? I'm sorry, anybody wishing to speak on any closed session items?
No, we do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, if not, then we're going to go ahead and go into closed session. And hopefully, so the public will know we'll try to be back by 7:30 to restart the meeting at that time. Okay?
Hi, Melissa, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you, Art? Now you're muted.
Oh, yes.
It's years of this, everybody still does it, but you're muted.
Well, because I keep my muted and I just push the spacebar when I'm on a talk. And then when I leave it, it's muted back, so.
I didn't know that works.
Yeah, if, yeah, if you mute it, push the spacebar, and you can talk, and then leave it, it will mute back.
Something new I've learned today.
See, after all these years.
Thank you, are we ready to go?
We are ready, Mayor Serta.
I want to remind everybody to please put your phones on mute. Okay, so we're ready to begin tonight's Gardena City Council meeting for Tuesday, March the 8th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Serta.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Cascanian.
Present.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, let me just read this before we go any further here. In order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus, Governor Newsom has signed AB 361. Please be advised that the council chambers are close to the public and that some or all of the Gardena City Council members may be attending this meeting telephonically. If you would like to participate in the meeting, you may participate via the following options. The first way is you can view the meeting live on Spectrum Channel 22 or online at youtube.com/cityofgardena. The second way to participate is prior to the meeting, you can email the deputy city clerk at publiccomments@cityofgardena.org by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting and write "Public Comments" in the subject line. The third way to participate during the meeting is via the Zoom webinar. The telephone number is area code 669-900-9128. And the meeting ID number is 879-2730-8480. Press the number 9 feature, which is the raise your hand, is to raise your hand. And the number 6 is unmute when prompted to. If you wish to speak live on a specific agenda item during the meeting, you may use the raise your hand feature during with the item you wish to speak on. For non-agenda items, you will be allowed to speak during oral communications and during a public hearing, you'll be allowed to speak when held in the public hearings. Members of the public wishing to address the city council will be given three minutes to speak. The City of Gardena thanks you in advance for helping us to take all the precautions in preventing the spreading of the COVID-19 virus. So we all just returned from closed session, and Madam City Attorney Vasquez, do we have anything to report from closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, with regards to item to a on-closed session tonight, the city council upheld the termination of the police sergeant on a vote of 5 to 0, and that concludes my closed session report for tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next up, we have our Pledge of Allegiance. We have two students tonight from Maria Regina Catholic School, Ricky Hunt and Kenneth Sanfilio. If they are present with us, we're going to ask them both to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Immediately following that, if you guys can stay on, and then we're going to have our invocation led by Mayor Protem Tanaka. And then we're going to come back to you guys for a few moments, so you guys can begin at any time now.
We will now begin the Pledge of Allegiance led by Maria Regina to the council. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And tis a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Okay, if you guys can hold on for a couple of minutes here, Mayor Protem, if you can lead us in tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight with peace in our heart. Father, we pray for all those in the Ukraine that are trying to either evacuate or stand their ground. Father, we just pray for that country. Father, we pray that the leaders of the entire world will just come together and find some way to make peace. Father, we pray for all the women in the world right now, as it is International Women's Day. We pray for their lives and all the decisions and the things that they lead us into, and the things that they will lead us into in the future. Father, we just thank you for all that you've done. We pray for our fallen officer from Huntington Beach. We just pray for the department and his family. Father, we just pray again that this council can make wise decisions tonight, that this council will do the best that they can for the entire city and move forward and make great decisions for great plans for the future. So, Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for all that you blessed with, in your son's name we pray.
Amen. Okay, thank you. So tonight's Pledge of Allegiance was led by two students from Maria Regina, Ricky Hunt and Kenneth Sanfilio. Hope I pronounced that right. Principal Annette Lino chose these two students, Ricky and Kenneth, to lead the city council tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance. Both students currently attend Maria Regina, and I know that you guys are awesome students, because if not, your principal wouldn't have picked you guys. So we just want to thank you guys for leading us tonight, and everyone, please give them a round of applause. You guys did a great job. Hopefully, we can see you guys come back in the future when we're live and in person, and we have the opportunity to meet you and let you lead us again in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, once again, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And as always, I'd like to thank Mayor Protem for leading us in tonight's invocation. We always give a very most appropriate prayer for our city and for our nation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so next, we don't have any presentations, proclamations, or appointments at the minute, so we're going to move straight to consent calendar. And I'm sure everybody's had the opportunity to take a look at that. And does any member of the council wish to discuss any items separately on here? Councilwoman Francis?
Yes. Item 8H, 8J, and 8K.
I'm sorry, item 8H, say the other one.
8J and 8K.
H, J, and K?
Yes.
Okay. And, Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even look to see. Councilmember Cascanian?
It's okay. I was going to pull item 8J as well, too, so I'll just see what Councilmember Francis will say, and then I'll go for it. Or she'll answer my question or something, so.
Okay, we're actually, we'll discuss those items separately under the excluded here. But, Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public who wishes to inquire about any specific items separately?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if I can get a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item... Oh, gosh, my computer. Give me one second. What just happened? Sorry about that, I don't know what's gone on the computer. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So if I can get a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number 8H, 8J, and 8K.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Henderson and second by Mayor Protem Tanaka. If you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay, so the excluded items here, items number 8H, 8J, and 8K. Councilwoman Francis, go ahead with questions?
Okay, my question for 8H, it says repealing the resolution adopting new conflict interest code. And it said that the new one, I guess the difference between the former code and the current code is that the listing of all the different department directors and all that was more fully... Is that what?
As new positions are added, Councilwoman Francis, we add them to the list, and so we bring back this resolution annually to ensure that any new positions that are created that would fall under on the requirements are included. And so that's why we update the list every year.
Okay, and the not fully executed, in parentheses, that this is because is annually updated, or as we, as you stated, as we create new positions?
I'm not sure why it says not fully executed. I think that was internally as it had not been signed by all at that point. But that's, that's what the... I believe when they saved the document, that's what they saved it as, but that's what that pertains to.
Okay, I was just concerned about, you know, if we vote on it, is was, are we voting on a not fully executed document, or?
No, it's just a saving. If you look at the resolution itself, you won't find that language in there.
All right.
I think when staff saves it, the updated version, they'll then, you know, change that to say fully executed, meaning that it's fully signed. As you see now, that obviously, since you guys have not voted on it, it hasn't been signed. Once you guys vote and assuming you approve, then it will become fully executed.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, the next item, item number 8J.
Okay, 8J had a couple of concerns. I didn't see it in, in the agreement about the maintenance of the rides. What, what steps are being taken to make sure, are they being checked regularly? And how that, what that process was included, what it should be included. And the other concern is that the city would provide one security guard. And I have a concern about that, because at the Halloween carnival, you know, I made the rounds, and the carnival was one of the last events that I attended. And when I got there, the one security guard, I don't know why he thought I was connected to the city, or he says, well, are you here to, to ask additional, additional security? I'm like, no, I'm not here for that. And, you know, he told, he says, well, they're supposed to send somebody, or they're supposed to send a police officer. So I just wanted to make sure, because he mentioned that there had been some concerns, there was a small incident, and there were a lot of people there. There were a good 200 people there at that, when I attended. It was later in the evening. And so I just want to make sure that, that we have enough security. And when I, when I, on my way out, I called, called the chief. Well, I didn't call him, but I texted him, I told him what I experienced, and he sent officers right away to patrol the area. But I just want to make sure that, that is going to be, that we're going to have good safety, something in place, rather than just one security guard.
I'll, I'll take the first part of the question, Councilwoman Francis. Under section 2 of the agreement, the second paragraph states, "The ride shall be, shall always be in place and operating during operating hours. The ride shall be maintained in a good and safe working order and displayed appropriate licensing as required by the state with regard to carnival rights." So that language will cover us to ensure that the, that the vendor is aware that that is the requirement that we're upholding. We don't have the staff nor the expertise to go to each ride and determine whether it's in proper working order. Obviously, if something, we became aware of something, you know, obvious to us, without having that expertise, we would notify the, the vendor of this.
Thank you, I, I saw, I saw that part, and I guess, I guess, you know, with, with so much going on and, and a lot of oops, and I just had, because is it, was it possible to, you know, specify what you consider maintenance, good, good, good order, working order, good working condition? It seemed to be a pretty broad term to, and I wasn't quite sure if they can put an contract to make sure that.
The reason why it's broad is because we don't want it to be limiting language, where they'll think only specific things. So we always create that language as, you know, in good, proper order, as what a contract would and what a court of law would look into.
But nothing like checking it on a regular basis, or?
The, the licensing that's required, yeah, the licensing that's required by the state mandates that they do that. So, you know, they are, the, all carnivals have separate licensing requirements to ensure the safety of the equipment that's being operated.
Yes, and with regards to security?
I'll let staff, yeah, I'll let staff handle that one.
Thank you.
We have, we're going to be augmenting the one security guard they have with PD patrolling the area, or they're going to be nearby. Obviously, we don't want to saturate the, the park, the carnival by having too many officers, but they have, they'll be there. Rest assured that if there's any, anything, anything happens, they'll be able to respond.
Well, you couldn't, because I, I suspect, because with the city, everything opening up, I suspect there's, there are probably even a greater crowd there. So could, I mean, besides a patrol, or are you talking about plane off, plane close or something? I just want to make sure that if there is an instance such as was at the, at the Halloween carnival, there at least be another security officer there, or security guard, or at least two. Because that's one for 200 people, I, I'm not quite sure.
We're, we're going to have, we're going to have uniformed officers on site and patrolling. But my point is, we don't want to saturate the whole, the whole carnival with too many officers, but they'll be around and available for quick response.
No, I wasn't, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, maybe I'm just a little worried where I, I wouldn't suggest saturate the area, because nobody would have fun. So we do want to have fun, entertain themselves.
That's why, that's why we're not saturating it.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wasn't asking for that, I'm sorry. Yeah, I probably didn't make myself clear, and then maybe I was thinking, just maybe one additional security officer, just, just, you know, two, to kind of walk around. Is that the guy they had, you know, he, he was sort of walking around, and he didn't look, I mean, at least two. I, I was just wondering about that, that's all. I'm not, not suggesting that you saturate. And, and when I did text chief, he, he said, you know, they're, they would make regular patrols, and they would, they're coming around, so that's not a problem there. But just onsite, you say there will be an officer.
There will be officers onsite, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's what I need.
And, and we'll, we'll have staff onsite as well. They're going to be wearing, you know, staff, you know, uniform, recreational staff. So there, there'll be another, you know, extra set of eyes and ears that will be, will be around.
All right, thank you.
So that was item number 8J, and then item number 8K?
Because Councilmember Cascanian had said about 8J, I don't know if I...
Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam.
No, 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 it's okay.
Can I go?
Yes, it's, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. My question, well, obviously, some of the concern that Councilwoman Francis, she asked, you know, that was mine too. But are we doing this, well, first of all, we are, we're going to mandate COVID-19 protocol, are we, or no?
Well, I mean, as far as I know, COVID-19.
As far as masks, or, I mean, I don't know, whatever is required for outdoor, I mean.
There is no requirement for outdoors unless it's a mega event, but there is no, this doesn't qualify for that.
Okay, and since our employee is going to be in the park, they're not going to be involved with anything, right? They're just going to be over there as observers?
Well, the, the carnival itself is operated by the, the vendor. Staff's just going to be there, like you said, to, to. to.
Yes, because they're using the park, that's it.
It, it is a recreation event and so we, we have to have staff there.
Yeah, they just want to make sure everything goes smoothly.
We're not gonna be, uh, be involved in the rides, the games or whatnot.
Okay, and in the, in the contract, it doesn't say anything as far as the insurance limit. I did not see it.
Believe it or not.
Coverage?
It does, and I have actually reviewed the certificate of insurance from them already, Councilman Cascanian. Every time a contract comes, staff sends me the certificate of insurance. So I could confirm that the insurance company that they have is actually an operation and meets all of the standard, uh, city requirements. So that it wouldn't come before you if it had not been verified already.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions or comments? No? Okay. And. And then eight K?
Oh.
You're muted.
Okay, so, um, this company, McCain Incorporated, we're already using them for, um, where we have a, a contract with them. And so this is asking for an additional funding. What happened? Why would they need additional 35,000?
This is just an additional blanket purchase order to buy, uh, to be able to buy and order parts as needed. As you know, there's, there's a shortage of, of supplies and parts everywhere. Um, so we don't want to be in a situation where we don't have controllers, we don't have, uh, you know, any equipment that's needed if there is an incident that needs attention. Um, so we need to replenish our stock, uh, of parts in order to be able to, you know, we just have to be ready for, for anything. We don't want to be, you know, in a position where we have to order something and it's backordered.
For sure. And by traffic control products and equipment, could you, um, tell me, give me an idea of what, what we're talking about?
These are going to be your signal timers, your, your lights, uh, et cetera, that's in the pole itself. Uh, they're, they're gonna be in the control box, um, you know, timing devices, anything related to, you know, signal, synchronization, et cetera.
Right, so I understand there's a tiny box at Overland Public Works. Would it help improve that so we can synchronize? Cause I know, um, one of our constituents talked about, uh, traffic flow on, um, Normity. As we, I know Rosecrance, as we approached Normity, right, right into there, she said it would back up a lot. So would, uh, additional purchase of these, uh, products help improve our traffic flow at all with that little?
So, so, so these are parts for, for those, but, you know, signal, uh, signal and timing is done through a study. And we would have to do a thorough study to see if, you know, uh, the traffic flow, uh, number of cars that pass through are, you know, impacted in some way by the, the signal or the, uh, the timing. So that has to be done. Uh, you know, you know, study has to be done to, to, to determine that and to even change it.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions or comments? No? Okay, that being said, can, can I get a motion to approve items number eight H, eight J, and eight K? Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry. Do you have a question, Paula?
No, I'm just, that's a second, uh.
Oh, okay. Um, you'll, you'll make the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Francis and a second by Councilmember Cascanian. Will you call the roll please?
Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tanaka.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
And Mayor Serta.
Yes. Okay, next moving on to, um, planning and environmental quality commission action sheet. Now, it's not noted on your agenda, but just like to just make a quick point of reference that the March 1st, 2022 meeting was canceled. So, uh, nothing happened on that day. Um, next we're gonna move on to oral communications. Uh, Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers at this time?
We have received one email communication.
Okay.
Uh, from Adriana Men, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, wrong one, Jorge Castro. However, when we opened the email, there was no content in the, uh, email or specific subject.
Got it.
And that is all. I don't see any hands up.
Okay. All right, with that being said, um, thank you. And we're gonna move on to item number 12A. Turn it over to you, Mrs. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, gen item, item 12A is a public hearing for resolution number 6566, upholding the decision of the planning commission approving site plan review number four dash 21 for the construction of a new 3,720 square foot multi-tenant commercial building with a drive-through in the commercial C2 and mixed-use overlay zones and directing staff to file a notice of exemption for new construction of small structures. The applicant is Sarah Withers and location is 15106 Southwestern Avenue. On February 1st, 2022, the commission considered a request for site plan approval to construct a new 3,720 square foot multi-tenant commercial building with a drive-through located at the southeast corner of Western Avenue and Marine Avenue. At the close of the public hearing, the planning commission approved resolution number two dash 22, approving the project and directed staff to file a notice of exemption provisions of the, uh, California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. On February 8th, 2022, the project was called for review by Councilmember Francis and seconded by Councilmember Henderson. Staff has prepared a, uh, prepared a presentation for the request under site plan review number four dash 21. There is no financial impact. What is required is to adopt resolution number 6566.
Okay. So, um, we have a presentation tonight. I believe this is going to be done by Amanda.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, let me go ahead and, if I can ask, uh, Deputy City Clerk, Becky, can you move me over to the panelist side so I can share my screen? Okay, perfect. Thank you. So let me go ahead and bring up my screen here. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, so yes, good evening, uh, Mayor Serta, members of the city council. Uh, tonight I will be presenting staff's report under item, uh, 12A for site plan review number four dash 21. So under the, this entitlement request, the applicant is requesting a site plan approval for, that will include the demolition of all the existing structures on the subject site. Uh, and the construction for a new, uh, yes, a 3,720 square foot, uh, multi-tenant commercial building. This construction includes a drive-through space that is currently, uh, designed to operate a Seven Leaves Cafe, which is a coffee and tea retail business. The other two tenant spaces do not have specific tenants at this time, but are designed uh, for either other restaurant, retail, or office uses. Uh, the, the project also will introduce new landscaping along the street frontages of the property and throughout the, uh, the parking areas. So the property in question is located at 15106 Southwestern Avenue. As you can see, is located within the cen, uh, central area as of the city as shown on the vicinity map here. Sorry. And taking a closer look at, uh, the, the aerial of the, an aerial map of the property, you can see that is the property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Marine Avenue and Western Avenue. The site is approximately 0.5 acres. It contains a L-shaped building that, as you can see here, um, through previous street photos, um, it was operating a automobile, uh, repair facility. However, um, as shown in the current photos here, you see that the building has been vacant. Um, and it's actually, it's, uh, by city records, it's been vacant since 2017. And so the applicant here is proposing again to demolish the, um, the vacant building uh, and repave the area there for 33 new parking spaces and for a new commercial building with a drive-through. Again, the project will include about, uh, 10 feet of landscape along both, uh, street frontages. Again, that's along Western and Marine Avenue as well as further landscaping dispersed throughout the parking area. So, uh, along the, the borders or the perimeters of the property and around the new trash enclosure. Uh, vehicle access is provided by a, two driveway entrances that lead to a two-way drive aisle, one off of Marine Avenue and the other as well off of Western Avenue, again, leading to a, uh, about a 26-foot wide drive aisle uh, that connects the, the two entrances. The proposed building again includes a drive-through uh, that will be able to queue about seven vehicles for, again, these Seven Leaves, um, tenant space. And here is shown before you is a rendering provided by the applicant that shows the proposed design of the new commercial building. As you can see, the building is of contemporary design, includes, uh, neutral color palette. And as, uh, as morally described below, um, are here, this shows that the design also includes changes in planes, materials, um, as prevent, um, the single max massing and box-like structure. So again, before you tonight, the applicant is requesting approval of a site plan review. As the property, uh, is located in the C2 zone, that's the commercial zoning district here, uh, within the city's zoning map, the intended uses, the drive-through and other retail and office-based uses are allowed by right. Um, so therefore, the applicant's request is, uh, is for the site plan review and solely to review the, the physical design of the project and to make sure that it meets the two findings, which one, again, to develop in consistency with the city's general plan and the city's municipal code. And two, that it's, the development wouldn't have any adversely affect the orderly and harmonious development of the existing area or the overall general welfare of the city. So through staff's report, um, and analysis, we, we show that the property does, is consistent with the various goals and policies of the city's general plan. Uh, as overall, the project will enhance the appearance and image of the neighborhood by removing the blinded building and constructing new quality commercial center that will bring jobs and, uh, and revenue to the city. As well as, um, staff reviewed the, the physical development and make sure that it meet all, that it met all of the minimum development standards. That's including setbacks, uh, maximum FAR, parking, and height restrictions, to name a few. And overall, um, as meeting those, the staff determined that this project would not have any adversely affect the orderly and harmonious development of the area and therefore can be, uh, made findings for the approval of the site plan review. Lastly, as for all, um, development projects, uh, staff reviewed the environmental assessment of it and found that the project was exempt from the, uh, California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to class three, which is for new construction and small structure projects. And that the project was not subject to any of the exceptions under, um, those, uh, the exception. And before finalizing, uh, staff's, uh, presentation, I do want to note that, um, a public comment was received and distributed to all the city council members and has been made part of the administrative record here. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. So at this time, staff recommends that the city council open the public hearing, receive testimony from the public, and adopt resolution number six five six six, approving site plan review number four dash 21. At this time, staff is available for any questions as well as the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Um, so at this time, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and, um, so the hearing's now open. And, um, does any member of the council have any questions at this time? Uh, let's start with Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question in regards to, uh, potential traffic study and traffic concerns in that are looking at the, where the drive-through entrance is going to be, that'd be on the, heading eastbound on Marine Avenue where that lane goes from two lanes and it merges into one. Uh, has PD gone by and kind of looked at the potential of what that traffic would look like in that area as you had eastbound on Marine? Or are we gonna do future traffic studies on that? Because if the drive-through backs up, it may back up people trying to cross Western going eastbound on Marine. How are we gonna address that? Or is there a traffic study pending?
Well, PD, uh, may come on in a short while, Councilman. I, I will say that the curb line, uh, along Marine there is red painted. So there will be, no one can allow to queue there on that Western Avenue. Um, they can't be on the side there. It's, it's all red curb.
So folks not waiting to get into the drive-through? They know they'll just have to move on or come in and park?
Yes, they.
Okay.
Correct. There's 33 spaces, uh, which staff determined is, is ample and, um, actually, uh, Ms. Withers, uh, with her analysis of Seven Leaves, uh, she may be able to comment on that also.
Well, you'd definitely like to hear from Ms. Withers, absolutely.
Um, if the applicant's available, if we can allow her to come on, Ms. Withers.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to, um, before you today, unfortunately, another year and we can't be together, but I'm sure that'll change hopefully soon so that we're ready for the ribbon cutting on this beautiful project. We're very excited. Um, in regards to, uh, the stacking that we have here, uh, seven car is actually, um, appropriate for seven leaves. Uh, the other thing that I'd like to remind you is that the majority of, uh, the traffic will be entering off of Western, um, which is a two, um, I, um, it's a egress and ingress, um, drive, driveway. So there's the potential if, let's say that, uh, there's, you know, super successful and do gangbuster business that we haven't seen at any of their over 50 locations and, you know, the Western United States. Um, you know, we have ample, uh, parking, uh, like was already indicated. We have 33 spaces, but you also have the opportunity that there is, uh, additional queuing within the property itself. So, uh, the, you know, but, um, we, we have looked at the other, um, businesses. This, this is more of the ambiance. I don't know if you've, uh, taken a look or if any one of you have visited, uh, Seven Leaves. But you know, it's, it's really a place where, you know, people come in, have the convenience of the drive-through, but they also come in and basically it's primarily tea. They're known for their macaroons and their pastries. So it's a very, um, you know, it's a different type of, um, of, of, uh, tea, tea location. So we do foresee that people are gonna want to come in as well as use the drive-through. But the seven-car queuing, um, it does lend itself for this type of user. Um, it's not, you know, one of these other more controversial, you know, I don't want to name any names, but we know because I frequent them often, but other drive-throughs that do have that. But here, we do feel that because we have the primary and turns off of Western that will have the opportunity if, you know, they're super successful and, you know, they, they have the opportunity to queue inside the property.
Okay, so my, my original question was in regards to the traffic that is going east on Marine. I know we have a red curb, but how are we going to work to prevent folks from just creating their own queue on Marine?
Um, you know, when you have a property that this. You know, when you have a property that is is close to the corner, you know, most people will come in and they'll be able to go in. The other thing also is that if it's so successful and there is an issue like that, they will probably have a a staff member that comes out and basically directs people to come in. So that's that's the other option. Like I mentioned before, we haven't seen this. This is, you know, and there are other locations that they have. If the seven-car queuing was inadequate for them, they would definitely not be taking the site because they want to be able to service their clientele property.
Councilmember Henderson, I think we can add some conditions that would include that i- if the queue passes seven, that they need to have a staff person outside in the parking lot to direct traffic. And we can also include a condition that clarifies that the CUP is subject to revocation if the stacking becomes a problem on Marine.
That's acceptable.
And that would also, not that we ever want to see Seven Leaves fail, but should the business ever change hands, you know, that's not acceptable for McDonald's in that location, seven cars.
If I may, this is a very unique situation.
There is no C. Oh, Greg just said there is no CUP. I thought we required CUPs for drive-throughs. I apologize. But we can still include a condition and we can include a condition, not that the CUP would be revoked, but that the site plan would be reviewed if queuing becomes a problem on Marine and if necessary, the drive-through gets closed. But, you know, that that's more of a concern for if for some reason another business took over. Because I'm sure Ms. Withers, as she says, that applicants don't choose locations that won't work for them.
It's a condition about if it goes beyond seven cars or the queuing becomes an issue that the business then has somebody out there directing folks inside. That was my only question. So I'm done, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilwoman Cascani and then Councilwoman Francis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Withers, it's a great project. I was just waiting when this location, that particular spot gonna be, you know, something coming up over there. But I would like to echo my colleague's question. It's I I know the area exactly. I've been following up on that property. You know, my concern is as well too, you know, the traffic. If, you know, the eight car is gonna stuck right on the driveway or outside the, and it's a narrow street. But I can tell, you know, the it it comes to and then it merges. It's down on Dank Danker Avenue. So it's they have enough room for the traffic to go by. Because we have another location on Redondo Beach and Normandy, another coffee shop, that we had a problem with them that, you know, their drive-through spilled on Normandy. Their entrance was from Normandy on the driveway. So I did notice that they do, you know, sent or there is an employee that it brings the the vehicles in. I've seen that already. So I'm just hoping that the same case is going to be with you guys. And and, you know, that's the only the concern my concern was too as well, you know, the traffic, the, you know, how are we going to handle, you know, the the driveway? I mean, the the drive-through. So other than that, great project. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we've been waiting a long time for somebody like Seven Leaves. And we're very fortunate. And actually, the city of A Gardena will be on the cutting edge because there are no Seven Leaves within this region. And it's a very niche. It's very unique. You know, the products that they sell, it's very wholesome also. So I think you're bringing a different type of, you know, drive-through and type of establishment that offers in more wholesome and natural products. So and just to rest assured that McDonald's, they would not take this site. And you have a lot of those big ones that Chick-fil-A, never. They would not look at the site. It doesn't work. And we wouldn't do that.
Okay. Councilwoman Francis?
Yes, I I had some concerns about the the traffic as well. That's a very busy intersection. And there were there there a couple because you can't really count the cars queued up, those seven cars. You can't really count those as part of your traffic. But with parking, I can see that parking will become a problem. People not being able to get out because they do. Also, on the Western side, there is a problem. There's a bus stop that's right there on the corner. And the driveway is behind the bus stop to enter. So I'm also concerned that if they don't, there's one coming out. It looked like on, let me just take them one one at a time. Right there on Western, there's a bus stop right there on the corner. The driveway is behind the bus stop. So I could see folks kind of cars maybe backing up there causing some congestion because there is another food restaurant-type place right behind it, right, right next door. So I could envision that. And then as they come in through the drive-through and try and exit, I thought I saw on the the picture in arrow pointing, arrow pointing in and arrow pointing out. When traffic backs up there, if you don't, because there's a business right, right across the street and because this business is just past the signal, traffic signal, you can, traffic will stop at a red line. You can get out of that business fairly easy. But trap, you know, the car still still backs up there. So I'm concerned about traffic backing up. I mean, Marine does narrow there. So you have two issues, not only the issue out there on Marine, but the issue there on Western as well. And I just want to know, those are my big concerns. What what can we do about that? Is there some something that can be done? I'm anticipating a successful business and that's why we I have a big concern about traffic. I'm also concerned about people depending on what other businesses go in. The other two, I'm also concerned about people not being able to get their cars out or just maybe some backup within the parking lot, even though you can't count those queued cars. Those the queued cars and queue as part of your traffic. But I can anticipate some problems of people getting getting in and out because it has happened at other areas, other sites where they have similar drive-throughs. And the one on Redondo Beach, you normally would say is that one. There's a big parking lot there already exists. So you're not just go go back the other way. But on this one, it's just kind of one way and one way out. If you get stuck, you get stuck. So I'm wondering what other solutions have we come up with? As Councilmember Henderson asked, had there been some traffic state? Did we even look to see if there's going to be a problem? Because I'd much rather solve the problem before it gets started, before it happens, rather than after the fact. Because I I want to see a successful business there as well.
Is that a question for me?
I'm not sure. Not sure who can answer it.
Thank you. Yeah. You know, actually, like I mentioned before, we do have thirty-three parking spaces. We do have sufficient stacking from what we have observed on the other businesses that we have. People, you know, generally come and they park. They use the the facility. The main entrance is off of Western. It's not, you know, Marin because we do have that option. But the main entrance is off of is is off of Western. And because you are close to the stop, the the stoplight, you'll be able to see that it's coming up and be able to turn in so that you don't miss it. This actually is a, it's it's a really good design in regards to, you know, when we design locations like this, this is very well thought out. And we were able to meet all of the conditions for the city, the including the very, you know, the very generous ten-foot landscaping berm that's surrounding the corner. If that was something that was smaller, you we'd probably be able to get more cars in the queue. But, you know, we did provide for all the requirements that were requested. Therefore, you know, but we do have sufficient. And like I mentioned before, you know, if they do have the situation where they have, you know, so much car traffic, they will be sending out their, you know, just like many of the other establishments with a lot of cars, they'll send somebody out with a headset, unemployed, and they'll be directing, you know, there's menu boards. I mean, now with technology, there's so many options. And the businesses themselves, because they don't want to have any issues and they don't want a customer to come, they have a hard time maneuvering in their lot. They'll never come back. And that's that's something that that the tenants themselves, they police that very closely.
Sounds true.
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you, were you still talking?
If I can get myself unmuted. I did notice that you did make some adjustments in in the plan with the number of parking spaces. And to accommodate, you went from very true and also with square footage. I I did read that into it. But again, I'm just real concerned that that we might be because of the situation and direction of, I am concerned that there's going to be a a traffic problem there that if we can figure out what to do about it now, even if with, I think we'd be better off. Because I guess I'm hoping for a successful venture. But right there, because if even if it does back up because it's right there at the corner, right there, Marine and Western, where it does narrow, that's the difference between some of the other locations. They have two-lane highways and the street doesn't narrow. And then going in, if you're going eastbound, coming across Western, going eastbound Marine and there's an open driveway, I'm going to try and go in there. I'm not going to go all the way around the block to come back on on the main main edges on Western. So if there's a driveway there, we're gonna, I'm gonna try and go in there. So I'm just wondering what else can be done or if anything else can be done.
I have a quick comment here. Rodney, I'm gonna get to you in one second, Mayor Protem. So I guess what I'm looking at on the left-hand side here, that's Western, correct? Where I think I'm seeing Valero and so on. That's Western? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so this site here reminds me of two other fast-food restaurants, Taco Bell right on Rosecrans and Western, as well as Jack in the Box. And it you enter in this, you can enter the same way. You can enter off the Western side. You can come in off the Marine side. And I understand Marine is a little bit more narrow and challenging. But like those restaurants, they're very busy all the time. And it's not that often that I see a backup, maybe like in a Jack in the Box or something like that. But it seems like, you know, it it works out pretty well as far as if a car is coming in off the Marine side, you know, they can actually drive down through the, I guess, like the back way if they're coming in off of, I'm using the example like a Jack in the Box. If they're coming in off of One Thirty-Fifth, they can come in and kind of turn around so that they're inside of the property and then able to go through the queue. So I, you know, and those businesses are really, really busy all the time there. So I I feel pretty confident that we'll be safe in this issue, in this instance here. And also too, because I guess where I'm looking at the parking, where I'm looking at like one, two, three, four, if those aren't taken up, then cars will kind of come through here and turn around and then get in line. So I mean, you know, I I I think it'll, you know, will still be good. And as long as that line is moving pretty quickly, if any car is blocked in, then, you know, they should be able to move out. I mean, I visit fast foods all the time. And, you know, sometimes that's just an issue that you have to deal with. So I mean, at the end of the day, it looks like we actually have more space on this site here than even those other two fast foods. I'm thinking of Jack in the Box down the street as well as Taco Bell. So because it looks like there's even more parking spaces at this location. Now, I don't know if CDD can confirm that or not. I know I just kind of threw those two locations out real quickly, but it looks a little bit larger than those. I know it's kind of hard to tell right now because there's an existing structure up there. And, you know, once everything's turned out, we can kind of get a better kind of spatial view of it. But I think it would, this is my opinion, I I think it would be okay. But a question I do have is, do you know if Seven, Seven Leaves, if they're a company known for like hiring locally? Or do they already have their staff in mind? I mean, if they just kind of, that they've already hired for the area? Ms. Withers, I don't know if you can answer that?
I don't know if they've, I don't think they've hired for the area yet. They usually will hire local and of course, they will bring somebody that's more seasoned, you know, to basically get it up and running and teach the and train the other staff.
Okay.
So this is the first in the region. So you're really, you know, this is a kudo for Gardena, you know?
And I'm looking at, I'm looking at the website for a Seven Leaves Cafe. Now, you mentioned that they had fifty other locations. Is that throughout the United States or throughout?
Yes, throughout the United States. They have, they started out in Orange County. And they have in Texas, excuse me, Las Vegas. They have in Houston, Dallas, Riverside, and San Jose, San Bernardino, Los Angeles, and Orange County.
Okay.
County, those areas, so. And Orange County throughout, they started in Irvine. So it's an Orange County-based company.
Got it. Okay. Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm not going to belabor this traffic thing. My my question is, Ms. Withers, have you reached out to the residential that's just east of you regarding any of their issues? Should there be any?
We will, and we can. As of right now, then we didn't, we didn't believe that there was an issue. That's something that I'll be more than happy to. And what usually happens is that throughout the construction, et cetera, I come on the job site. Most people, you know, even the homeless will call me because they know that I'm around, you know? So we're very, very accessible. We have our phone number, but I will definitely reach out. We want them as customers. We want them to, you know, walk over and enjoy a cup of tea, you know, instead of dealing with all the issues, you know, in the area, you know, that they could just walk over and basically enjoy themselves, you know, maybe in the morning, afternoon. So we want to make sure that that they feel welcome and we want them to come in and be customers and.
Yeah, because this is a totally different venue than what was there before. And I think there were some issues with the the mechanical venue that was there with the cars parking on the street with just the whole, the whole mechanical thing. And I'm sure if you assure those people next door, because there's a, there's, I think, an apartment and some other things next door. I'm sure if if you kind of reached out to them, they would be more than happy.
I will. And, you know, I'm sure they're going to be very happy. You don't have, you know, the the auto repair next door. I mean, you have this beautiful, well-landscaped new center that is going to increase, you know, the property values and give them somewhere new to come. And it activates the space to deter some of the bad element, you know? So I think they're, they'll be very happy.
You might get the Big Donuts some competition.
So you're either, you know, there's enough room for everybody.
Yes. And I think the traffic issues will all be taken care of by PD.
And Mayor Protem, I do want to remind the council that these are noticed hearings, so notice went out to a three-hundred-foot radius.
Oh, okay.
And we didn't have anybody outside of the one letter that you received. I don't think anybody came to the planning commission either.
Okay.
Yeah, but so neighbors were notified.
Thank you.
You know, and I think there was something that was said a few moments ago that was very important. And and that's when tenants look for places like this where they have drive-throughs. If it's hard for customers to get through, sometimes you only have one shot at, you know, getting a new customer. And and if it took too long or if it's too much of a hassle, there's a very good chance they may never come back. And unfortunately, I've seen locations like that where something you really want, but it's just too hard trying to get in there, whether it's a parking situation or an awkward drive-through or something like that. So I I I think you're spot on with that. Councilwoman Francis, did you have another comment? I see your hand.
Just a couple, couple more. I know that because of the new construction and all and the exemptions for that, so and because there's not using any hazardous material, the the new new business not using hazardous materials and all all that. So this is sequel exempt. But what about the previous use? Is is has there any been any look into about whether? But what about the previous use? Is, is, has there any, been any look into about whether or not the, the soil, because of auto repair, you know, solvents and all that going into the soil, is, is the land clear?
You're asking me, correct?
Who are we going to answer?
Yes. And we would not be able to proceed with this project.
There's no contamination there?
No. And actually, you know, our, that's our forte is actually cleaning up contaminated sites. I personally, myself, have done, cleaned up 15 gas stations for the company, where we put local Starbucks, McDonald's, et cetera. And 39-acre dump site in the city of Palm Springs that it was a municipal landfill. Now we have a 400,000-square-foot shopping center anchored by Home Depot. And the city was getting hammered by DTSE and fined. And we came in and we very successfully were able to clean that up. So this is something that is our forte. It, it stays in our portfolio. This is not something that we're going to build and then try to flip. So it's something that, you know, we obviously were maintaining and operating. And so it's in our best interest and the communities that, you know, everything's done correctly so that we don't have to worry about it later. Because it's a huge investment.
Yeah, for sure. I just, I know we, there are other projects that they've gone forward in. If we can not keep doing the same thing over and over and maybe bring some improvement, I, I do have a concern about that traffic. That's my biggest concern.
I agree. The other thing I wanted to mention is if you notice all the, the front doors and the access to the, to the, to the buildings, they're all on the opposite side of wherever the parking lot, the drive-through entrance. So, you know, you're probably, I mean, if the parking lot is that full that you have to go all the way to parking stall one, that's great, but they're going to move.
Yeah. Okay. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers at this time?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do. We have Zahida Med.
Okay.
Oh, good afternoon, City Mayor and City Council. So I think this is an excellent project for Gardena. You know, we definitely need more of these coffee shops and, you know, more being built in Gardena, and this is excellent. I just had some ideas or suggestions for landscaping. I know on one of the other properties, it's not, it's one of the built properties built probably seven years ago in Gardena. It's, it was made with land, they're saying it's landscaping, but it's like stones, like to be water-conscious. But I would say for landscaping, we should mandate, you know, maybe a tree every seven feet, a specific type of tree. And then also like shrubs and maybe grass and ground covering, actual like real planting and prohibit stones or cementing and calling that landscaping. So that's just a suggestion. Also, I would suggest if we can possibly, you know, since we have the developer here, if we can ask them if they can make it solar-ready. So essentially, we can even potentially, in the future, you know, have where, you know, solar on the roof or solar canopies or even electric charging infrastructure. You know, possibly, there's a company called Volta. They charge cars for free. And they just have like advertisement on, like, like a banner. So even that. And then also if we can potentially, you know, since this is a brand-new development going into, you know, this area, it's excellent, I think. If we can even have trees and shrubs being planted, like for example, across the street, there's a donut shop. There's like grass, if we can even plant some trees, you know, possibly even partnering with the developer. And then also the sidewalk, if we can replace that, you know, if we could potentially incorporate that. And also making sure that we can have, ensure free Wi-Fi for the community members in the area, that they don't have to be a customer, that, you know, essentially we can have this as a way to, you know, enrich the community and, you know, have that opportunity of having Wi-Fi available, if, if possible, for free. And that's all. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time? No? If not, we're going to go ahead and close the hearing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We have three conditions that we would recommend adding and including in your motion.
Okay, go ahead.
That would be, one, if the queuing goes beyond the length of the queue, the business shall have an employee in the parking lot directing traffic and ensuring that traffic does not back up onto Marine Avenue. Two, the site plan approval shall be subject to review by the planning commission if queuing continues to back into the street. And that's actually in the code anyway, because you can always do revocation, but it just calls it out. And three, signage shall be placed at the driveway entrance on Marine Avenue, providing that queuing shall not be allowed on the public street.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I just add something to the record for this?
Sure.
Well, as Amanda Kuna stated, that we did receive written email from a member of the public. And I just want to go on record that it has been forwarded to all of the council members and it may have been made part of the record. And then any member of the public who wishes to view it may do so by calling the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, can I get a motion to approve Resolution Number 6566, along with approving the site plan review 4-21, and also adding in the three conditions as well?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Mayor Protem Tanaka and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson? Councilmember Cascanian?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
And Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay. Good luck with the, Mr. Withers, good luck with the project. Looking forward to the groundbreaking and, and all of that good stuff that's going to come with it.
We want to have a ribbon cutting. So hopefully, you know, soon we can see everybody in person. We'll do. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And thank you to Greg and Amanda. They've been fantastic. We've been working on this for a year. Not that long that Greg has been on, but we want to thank him very much. It's really, it's going to be a fantastic project. Thank you.
I think so. And.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much. And knowing our city council, we just love ribbon cutting. So. Okay. So next up is item number 13A, which is a COVID-19 update. Mr. City Manager?
My apologies. Mayor Serta, members of the city council, I'm sharing my screen for our COVID-19 update. So our current case count is at 16,043 cases. That is up 107 since our last meeting. Total death count is at 261. That's up, unfortunately, up nine cases since the last time we reported. As far as vaccination is concerned, children five to 11 is at 30.6%. Those are ages 12 and up is 87.7%. The youth category 12 to 17 is at 80.1%. And our seniors, 65 and above is at 95%. We are, we still are continuing with our COVID-19 testing at Raleigh Park. As of the 22nd of February, we tested 5,186. That's 197 tests since the last council meeting. Mayor Serta, that is my COVID-19 report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And does any member of the council have any questions at this time? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Let's move on. Item number 13B, which is the approval of the contract with Townsend Public Affairs. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, item 13B is the approved contract with Townsend Public Affairs Incorporated. Legislative advocacy plays an essential role in protecting locals' control for cities. It is a way for the voice of the constituents to be heard, builds and strengthens relevant relationships, and it's a first step in taking action to make changes to benefit our communities. The city realizes how challenging it can be to keep up with developments at the state capital that affect our city, especially as we address a deluge of community issues as we recover from the effects of the pandemic. Because we have a responsibility to our community to look after their very best interests at all levels of the government. This is staff's recommendation that the city contract with Townsend Public Affairs Incorporated for these vitally important services. With 23 years of experience, Townsend Public Affairs brings the resources and a relationship expected from a premier firm with the added benefits of personal attention, maximum accessibility, and passion for their mission. The strategic approach to advocacy and funding will be tailored to meet the city's specific needs by utilizing TPA's vast network of relationships with key stakeholders and decision-makers. A proven formula has shepherded over 100 legislative and regulatory proposals into law, as well as securing over 2.2 billion in grant funding. As effective advocacy requires an ongoing and focused effort, staff therefore recommends that the city council approve a one-year contract with Townsend Public Affairs Incorporated in the amount of $84,000 or $7,000 a month to provide legislative advocacy and grant-writing services. The impact is $84,000 to the general fund, and what's required is to approve the contract.
Does any member of the council have any questions or comments at this time? Councilmember Cascanian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, so I thought our staff does this already. You know, they write the, the grants and everything, don't they? And we have another company that does help us?
That's correct. This is, the main focus for Townsend Public Affairs is advocacy, lobbying in the federal and state level. We do have our staff working with a grant writer that we saw that was recently was very successful in writing a grant for Prop 68. But they don't do advocacy. So the main focus for Townsend is to do the advocacy portion. Grant writing is still going to be done by staff with some support from our grant writers.
Hey, I mean, this is a kind of, just for them to, you know, represent us or do the advocacy for us up in Sacramento, you know, $7,000 a month, that's a steep, you know, pay for us to do this. I don't know. How, how long have we been doing this? Have we been doing, doing this before?
No. This is, this is actually the first, first time we're, we're going to be doing this. There are going to be some earmarks that are going to be coming up and, and expiring pretty soon. And so that's why we, we felt the need that, that we need to have somebody represent us, our interest in both the federal level and the state level. The, the notion of, of hiring a, a advocacy group on a retainer basis is probably the only way to go about this. Because on the type of service they provide, it is, it is not allowed for us to do a contingency basis, meaning that, you know, we can't hire them and, and give them a percentage of, of our awards, for instance. The only way really to secure the representation that we need is to hire somebody on a retainer basis. We can't utilize, can't utilize a contingency basis. Very much so, if we were to hire a grant writer, there is an option, right? We can either retain them for a certain dollar amount or do it a contingency basis if we get awarded and they get a certain percentage. This, you know, advocacy, there is no option for that.
But we were doing okay so far without them, right? I mean, or it was a need or we were paying somebody to do this job previously.
We never had anybody to do this job for us. There's a lot of funding out there. We feel the need that, perhaps we're, we're missing out on a number of different opportunities out there.
If I can interject here, Councilmember Cascanian, it's been my understanding that the governor has a lot of excess money right now that he's going to be distributing out there. And a company like this one here, their expertise is being able to see if we have any current projects, anything on our wish list that we, you know, we'd like to get funded. And since the governor is being so generous and, you know, getting this money to different cities like this, now's the time before it expires, I almost say expires, before the deadlines hit, to have a company out there and try to advocate and get money for our city.
Yes, I understand, Madam Mayor. But the thing is, we do have already, a company does that for us, to, to write a grant for us in our behalf. And they did it already, and we get that $6.8 million. And many others probably in the past few years. So my question is, why do I have to pay $7,000 to somebody else to do the exact same job that, you know, previous company or the, the recent company that, you know, we're working with, they're doing it? I'm just, I, I was just curious. I mean, why do we need another one?
So California Consulting does the grant writing. They don't do lobbying. They don't go into appropriations committees. They don't do networking. They, they don't do any of that stuff. They're just purely writing grants. And we are happy to continue working with California Consulting with grant writing. There's no, we have no, absolutely no reason to abandon their services since, you know, they've been successful with us. So we're going to continue with California Consulting as far as helping us secure grants, as far as writing it and rules and whatnot. But as far as the lobbying is concerned, I'm afraid we don't have anyone in Sacramento or DC that does that for us currently.
And this company is going to represent many, many others like us.
Correct.
And we're just going to be a drop in the bucket. Like, right? I mean, yeah, that's part of it too. You know, they're not going to go say, hey, I'm here from Gardena and I'm looking for this money. Right? They're just going to say in general that we are here representing 200 cities, you know, that is part of us. They're paying us $7,000 per city, and we need $10 million from you, right?
Not quite. They're going to be representing the city in the sense that if we have a need for, so we know, already know that we have a need for parks grants. And if, 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 for instance, there is a, some money available for additional parks, parks projects that is not yet earmarked for that purpose, the company would then fight for the city's interests and say, hey, Gardena has an interest for additional parks or additional improvements on their park facilities. They would, they would need something, you know, they would need something in the tune of, let's say, 10, 12, 15 million dollars as far as an available grant. Now, Prop 68, remember that's a sort of an available grant. All we had to do was apply for it. If the grant is not available, we can't even apply for it. So the purpose of having a firm to advocate for us is for a grant to be available so that we can then apply for them. If the grant is not available, then we can't apply.
Yeah, of course. So California Consulting firm, they cannot do this, right? They cannot do that.
They do not do this.
They're just filling the blank and send the application in.
They, they're just not filling the blanks. They, they, they help us with their expertise as far as how to answer the grant requirements. So they don't, they don't go and, and tailor the grants and then, you know, provide a grant schematic for, let's say, the state. All they're doing, all they're doing for us is responding to the grant so we have a better chance at successfully securing the grants. So if the grant is not even available, then we can't apply for it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Francis, go ahead.
What is about this company then, as compared to other companies? Did we do a request for proposal? Or this is the only company that we, we took a look at?
So Townsend, Townsend is one of the larger companies that does this kind of work. We do have some. We do have some, we understand there's some deadlines coming up. There is no time for an RFP. This is going to be a professional services contract. We're not bound by any rules or law that prescribes us to do an RFP for this type of work. And I do want to reemphasize so that the contract is for one year, for seven thousand dollars a month. And it's a performance-based contract, meaning that at any given time, if we're not happy with their performance, so month two, month three, month four, we can terminate the contract. Doesn't have to go through all the way to the, to the one year.
And, and my other question is, don't, don't we already have a fairly good working relationship with our Congresswoman at the federal level and the state level? I'm trying to figure out exactly what it is that are they going to do for us besides talking to people, lobbying?
We have a good working relationship with the Congresswoman, but on a senate level, we don't have any representation there. On the state level, you know, I mean, we, we react to grants like Prop sixty-eight. You know, but other than that, I mean, we find out things on the second hand. And we have to apply here, apply there. We don't have anyone that fights for us. And Mr. Townsend is available for questions and answers if, if.
If you can bring him in as well, because maybe he can answer some of these, these questions for us as well. Beck, if you can add him to the list while he's coming on.
Just knows why he's coming on. Are, is this something that other cities are involved in besides just us or?
Yes, they have, they have different, they have a lot of different clients as well. They have five offices throughout the country, Sacramento, DC, Oakland, Fresno, and then here in Newport Beach.
Not, not this particular company. I'm just wondering, are, are, do other cities have lobbyists in all these different places as helping them out or?
Yes, that, that is a very common practice. In fact, Gardena is probably the, you know, one of the last ones that don't have representations in federal and state level. Chris, Christopher is here. Maybe you can answer some of these questions, Chris.
Absolutely. Mr. City Manager, thank you, Mayor and council members for this opportunity to address your questions. Excellent questions asked. I hope I could help clarify. I think a specific thing, I think one thing is to distinguish what do we do versus what a grant writer does. And so, by the way, our firm does grant writing as well, if you look us up. But we understand in this engagement, the city manager will be giving priority to California Consulting and that stuff. We're always available if we could help. What we do on the lobbying advocacy side with money reflects it a couple ways. First, it's the concept of earmarks. Earmarks are when they put in the budget, it's a legislative play, specific spending for a specific project for a specific city. So for example, in the city of Dinuba, which is a client in the Central Valley, they got one million dollars for helping clean up a polluted water well. That was their project. And we've generated over the past two cycles where they've done earmarks, over four hundred and thirteen million dollars in earmarks. And that is really an advocacy function. It's not a grant writing function. It's political power and understanding, and there's a whole process. So to another person's comment, I believe it was Councilmember Francis, you do have good relationships with your members. Or even regardless of the quality of the relationships, our kind of role is to actually help even staff them to drive the process to get there because they get very swamped. And there's a lot of data and materials and information that the staff and the agencies require. The governor's office will look at this stuff because he could blue line out an earmark. So that's why, because, you know, the, the budget committee chair has to support it, the assembly, you know, budget chair. So in addition to getting, let's say, Mike Gibson, your assemblyman, to sign on to this, it will be, we've got to sell in the budget chair in the assembly committee and the speaker, Anthony Rendon, because this is all more of a political advocacy process. And that's the fundamental distinction between us and a grant writer. And then in addition to earmarks, we will also do items which is to help create more funds. My colleagues could also fill in. This last state budget cycle, the governor put in a lot of money for parks and open space and other climate resiliency materials. We're looking to push with him to do that again and replenish some of these grant programs that then you can apply for, as the city manager mentioned. These, these, the strategic, the state's strategic park program is exhausted, has no more money. The Clean California Grant Program that could help with parks, it's exhausted. It needs replenishment, which is what we work on. But then it's getting those earmarks as well. I hope, I rambled on quickly, but that's the concept of what we do. We also do it at the federal level in addition to the state. You know, the feds are doing earmarks and they'll, the first round for last fiscal year will get announced later this week if they finally sign the budget. And we've got about sixty-four million dollars of those earmarks for our municipal and local clients in there as well. And that's another, that's part of that whole price package because you're combining both that federal work and that state work. So that's where the, the price comes from. That normally might, firms might charge ten, fifteen or more a thousand dollars for that kind of service.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Councilmember Henderson had a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Townsend, for that explanation. Mr. City Manager, in regards to the advocacy, would this then allow us to kind of separate ourselves? So like when CalCities does some advocacy and everything and there's a large lot of money, but it's then split between all these cities and our population size and or sometimes we just don't get our portion outright? Would this then help us get in front of the line, so to speak, to make sure that the city of Gardena then secures a funding, funding specific to our projects and the things we need to do in our city? So like when the state says there's X amount of million, case in point, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, a lot of, a lot of billions coming out and everything. Would, would Townsend then help us make sure we steer what we need to the city of Gardena, not just the state of California, but to the city of Gardena? So we get our share or fair share, whatever term you want to use, so we can complete our work?
That's a great question, Councilmember Henderson. Answering your question, yes. I mean, this is not, as Chris had mentioned it earlier, the earmarks would be specific to Gardena and not into a, you know, a group of cities. Now, Chris jumped here in a time and, and I fill in the blanks. Is that pretty correct?
Yeah, I would add that, you know, there is value to your associations like League of Cities and Contract Cities, but that's usually on the more global basis of the issues that you're all in agreement on. But I'm like your shark, you know what I mean? I'm for you going when you need stuff for you. I'm the guy who does that, my firm, because Contract Cities, League of Cities, they work for everybody, right? They don't, they can't, they can't cherry pick and do something for a member, member city. And that's what we do for you. And you hit a good point, Councilmember Henderson. That includes getting to front of the line, getting visibility, getting, you know, all the key, just of Gardena on their mindset. And we will have been all over the place because we're known for being champions for good cities, so we have a good reputation. And, you know, we'll make sure they've got, you know, Gardena's there and we'll get great consideration. And it also helps with the agencies themselves. So like with the interest in parks, we would spend time working with the Resources Agency Secretary, the leadership at Department of Parks and Rec, and get them more focused on your need because you have a lot of needs. And that's what we would do for you that, like, the League of Cities or Contract Cities couldn't do, and it's not what a grant writer does. And I hope that's helping with some of those distinctions.
Yes, that, that does. Thank you very much, now, Mr. City Manager. Because the city of Gardena has now developed this need and we did not go out for a competitive process because Townsend, I'm familiar with their work, but there are other firms that also do similar type work. So how did we select TPA over some of the other firms that work in this space?
So, so again, the, the thing that's driving this is the, some of the deadlines that are coming up. So Mr. Townsend and his firm are recommended, highly recommended by the JPA that has used them in the past or worked with them in the past. So it's a, it's a highly recommended firm. If we were to do an RFP to, to secure a contract with another firm, they would set us back months to do this. Again, this is a professional service contract. It is not required for us to do a, an RFP. This is a, you know, a one-year contract. We do have provision on a month-to-month basis as far as terminating the contract for any reason, financial reason, performance-based reason, any reason at all. You know, we, we can terminate the, the relationship with the Townsend.
If I could perhaps add something on the urgency, just so you're aware, for the state earmarks, the deadline to get your members to want to submit them is late April. And in Congress, it's mid to late April with the senators. So if you don't have your stuff in with those folks and have them already sold in to want to go ahead and they have to put it on a list they include, then you're, you're, you're out of luck. You won't be able to get it. So that is one of the, the timing problems. And I don't know why other firms, you know, we really specialize in this and do it well. And there's not a lot of firms, I mean, we're the, we're the, we're the most successful and strongest of the firms that focus in the municipal niche. And I think it's because we get these results. And I can't speak to the other firms, why they're not, not out there chasing your business? Because this is the time before the deadline runs out. So, but that's the reason for the urgency. As, as it's been referenced earlier, what's the urgency? And that would be the urgency on that.
Last, last point. In regards to a list of things that we want to do in the city, which are some of the things that we're trying to target now to get funded through some state funding or federal funding? Mr. City Manager, if you can enlighten us.
By, by far, Councilmember Henderson, great answer to the question. By far would be our parks, facilities, infrastructure. Ninety percent of our parks facilities is in need of either reconstruction or tearing down and building a new building. For example, Masukai, I just reviewed the plans for a complete teardown of the, the building and erect a new one plus, you know, and some of the facilities that we have in that park totaling about three and a half million dollars. Now, this, they have, they were to grant, that we can apply for this. Obviously, that's money that's well spent and saved if we can do that. So to answer your question, by far, it's our parks. It, it's just an aging, aging infrastructure that, that really needs help.
TPA is part of a JPA, you did say, correct?
I'm sorry?
They're part of a JPA that's already in existence?
Uh, which one?
JPA agreement or is Townsend part of a existing joint powers or authority?
They, they are a part of, no, it's, it's not a part of that JPA. Chris, what is, what are some of the clients that you have currently that's pretty relatable to the city of Gardena?
So most of our clientele are cities, along with, we have some school districts, community college districts, water districts, sanitation districts, park districts. We've had a lot of success with Park and Rec Districts. My colleague Alex has won millions of grants for them and other earmarks over the past few years. The, so we've worked with cities as small as the city of Huron, which has ten thousand people in the Central Valley, to cities the size of Oakland, who's been a client and serving their needs. So we've served the whole breadth of needs. And you, you strike me as a classic city that just deserves to get more out of the process. And it's just, you know, having that, that kind of advocate for you. I mean, that's the, you know, you have the stuff on the merits. It's this process can be difficult and political. And how do you get through it? So that's why my confidence level that I can work in that we're familiar with, with your communities and what you're working through.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Cascanian, you had a question?
Yes, Madam Mayor, a question to Mr. Townsend. Can you name me a city or two in LA County that they contracted with you guys?
Sure. The city of Carson has worked with us, the city of Duarte, the city of Torrance, the city of Glendale.
Are they currently working with you or they worked with you?
Those have, so as we've worked with and had been successful with, and I'm going through my list to reconfirm who we are still working with. You know, with a lot of these, we get a lot of the stuff done and there's really not much more of a robust agenda. So we move forward. It's not like we've been, you know, fired or terminated. So Lomita has been one of, you know, Mark Warneck, Contract Cities, they've used us in Lomita. And I apologize, I should have had my, my schedule handy, but I can, I can.
That's okay. That's no problem. My next question to Mr. City Manager. Since we know that this grants are due or the applications or whatever we're going to call it, how come we waited until now and now last minute we are hiring this firm?
We didn't. We weren't aware of that to begin with. I mean, we, we simply had no resources to do that, to, to advise us. Again, we've engaged with California Consulting. But to be fair, that's not, it's not what they do. They react and they apply for grants. They're not going to know what earmarks are going to be due pretty soon. So we, we didn't have, we didn't have the information. We didn't have anything to go off on to react. And so, you know, I apologize, this is a last-minute thing. I think if, if we engage with Mr. Townsend and we'll see if, if we're successful. I mean, it's just, you know, a small amount to, to pay for something that's potentially be a big windfall for the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Francis.
So we have a, a grant writing consultant that's not aware of available grants? Or they?
No, again, the grant writers are, are aware of the available grants. They, they advise us of the grants that are, could potentially be something that the city could be awarded. What Mr. Townsend is, is an expert on is some of the things that are not available yet that could be earmarked for the city. I mean, if the, the grant's available, it's easy. We just apply for them and use California Consulting to, to do their work. And we apply and, case in point, we did Prop sixty-eight, it's available. We applied for it, we used them, and we got, you know, we got the grant. But if it's not there yet, then there's really nothing for us to apply for. And that's where Mr. Townsend comes in to lobby and, and work to see if we can get some of the earmarks that could be available to the city of Gardena so we can then apply for them. Chris, did you want to?
Yeah, an interesting example right to that point on Prop sixty-eight, which is out of money now. There's legislation carried by Eddie Garcia, who's the former chair of the Water, Parks and Wildlife Committee, based down, he's in San Diego. He's got a bill, AB twenty-three eighty-seven, which is all about replenishing the Prop sixty-eight funds so they have more money. So we're working closely with him on that. Now, there's a couple of spirits. One, just overall, if that thing gets replenished, and we're kind of, some of the lead advocates on this, that benefits the ability to have money to apply for. But in that process, we're going to be looking for opportunities of whether or not there can be an earmark in that bill or really those earmarks end up in a budget bill. But what else can we do with this legislation to tweak it, to guide it, to make categories or subcategories that ensure not only are your projects fully eligible, but they're going to be really competitive? It's kind of like, you know, I don't want to be as crass to say you're kind of tweaking the rules in your favor, but I'm not, not saying that. You know, that's the kind of thing we fight for to make sure you guys, you know, not all the money goes to LA and San Francisco, but how can it get out to these, these other communities? So that would be an example of how that process would work.
Okay, and how, how are we paying, paying for this? Where does this come out of the budget?
Get open.
Any more questions or comments? So just for clarification, I, I thought I was under the understanding that, for instance, like the state had something like twenty billion dollars that they have to get spent down. And so, I don't know, let's just say we're, we're coming up with a project that, I don't know, we're going to have a, I, I want to just say like a dog park. It doesn't have to necessarily be that. And if there's not a grant available for it, is that something you could go out there and advocate for or something to that nature? If we're saying, you know, hey, is there anything close to that out there? Because this is something that the community wants and within the region, there may only be one other within a, I don't know, eight mile radius.
Usually the process we'll use is we'll quickly meet and work with the city that helps establish, you know, key priorities. In this case, clearly, it's the parks is going to be a dominant one. But we'll bring things to the table as well, like that, where we think there are some other funding opportunities that we think we can be successful at, not, it won't deter us from the park stuff. I have a strong team so we can do multiple things. So let's say So let's say there's a, a thing for a dog park. Let's say there's something to help refurbish your library. You know what I mean? A hypothetical, we could go, hey, you know, and that will take some kind of that, that effort with these earmarks or this other spending. So we can pursue whatever you need us to pursue, but part of that job of us is to tee up what we think is available and realistic to get. But yes, we, we won't, the contract doesn't limit us to any single scope. It's basically anything we can do. Anything, you know, to help the city. For example, let's say all of a sudden you're having a big problem with Caltrans on something you're trying to do, and we know how difficult Caltrans can be. Well, that's one of the things we do. We would jump in and fix that for you. We can pretty much apply our skills. You know, there's a lot of stuff with homelessness and funding there. There's a lot of stuff with public safety that's going on. And so we would make sure you're aware of those opportunities and calculations of how to get it. And so you're not, you're not just pigeonholed into what item, which for clearly, the city managers may clear, the parks resources is, is, you know, the top, the top priority, but we can do more than one thing.
Okay. So at, at the end of the day, I mean, I, from what I'm hearing and understanding here, yes, our party right now might be parks, but if you see an opportunity where we can rebuild one of our facilities, or there may be money for police or public works or whatever, you're going to make sure that all that information is available to us, so we then know how to go after it. And because different cities are going to be trying to get this money that the governor's got, I don't want to use the term get rid of, but spend down
Right.
very quickly, then I guess now seems like the time to jump on it. Okay.
Yeah, if it's not clear, like this is a great opportunity this year, maybe we'll have some stuff next year, but the conservative thinking is this is not going to last. And my recommendation to clients is go for it now.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on this?
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor. We have two individuals, Wanda Love and Zahida Med.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Council. I am glad to hear that you guys are starting to look at all of the money that's left on the table. I kind of agree with Councilman Cascanian or whoever asked the question, why would you start now? It seems like if we developed a better relationship, a better working relationship with our elected officials who lobby for us because we're in their district to do the same thing, who has control of some of the funding and the purses, that we can get some of these projects funded. We don't have a great relationship with our elected officials, unfortunately. But I do know that they've stated that the city of Gardena doesn't ask them for any funding for any of the projects. And I've heard some of our elected officials give reports on how much money they've gotten for other cities. So my question is, what do we need to do to establish a better relationship with our elected officials versus paying all these consultants to do this, to do the work? I mean, I understand the difference between lobbying and grant writing. And there is a ton of money out there, especially since the pandemic, that has not been spent. But I would really rather see the city to start establishing relationships with our county board of supervisors who has money, our Congresswoman Waters, our Assembly Member, Marisuchi, not Mike Gibson, our Senator Steve Bradford. They all have access to purses and funding dedicated for, that they can go after for the cities that they represent. So why are we spending $84,000 of the city's funds to have a lobbyist go out and do what the city should be or should have been doing all along? No disrespect to Mr. Townsend or his agency. I respect lobbyists, but I think this is something that the city elected officials, the city department heads can accomplish if they start to work on creating better relationships with our elected officials who are elected to do this very thing for the cities that they represent in their district. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Let me just quick response to that. One of the things that I, I think, I believe we have is a very good working relationship with a lot of our elected officials. Oftentimes, Congresswoman Waters has meetings with a couple of us at a time. Of course, you can never have meetings with three of us. But they reach out and they ask us what sort of projects we're working on. A lot of times we go to dinner with her and those are the kind of things we talk about. What are our needs? You know, where can she help us out with that? Same thing with Assembly Member Marisuchi. And I know Mike Gibson technically is not our assembly member, but he even reaches out to us because I think a lot of us, or most of us here have good working relationships with them. Now, that being said, I think they do what they can to get money to our areas depending on what our needs are. And regardless of whether or not an elected in those positions have good or bad relationships, I think at the end of the day, their job is just to get the earmarked money from the state or federal and get it to the cities that are needed, regardless of that. Because at the end of the day, a good elected official, it's about getting it to the communities that it's needed the most. So, you know, with that being said, that's one side of it, but I think the other side is having a, a person like Townsend, sorry, I'm not calling this by the correct name, Townsend Public Affairs, be an additional resource for us to go out there and get any money out there. Because like we said, we don't want to leave any money left on the table if it's something that the City of Gardena can get. So, yeah. Anyway, Madam City Clerk, we have another speaker? I think our wifi is doing something kind of weird. Madam City Clerk, are you still there? I think you're muted.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are now.
Yes, Zahida Med.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, yes. Hi, good afternoon, City Mayor and City Council. So I had a quick question. Is there a way for this, you know, this, for this amount of money that they're, you know, charging? Is there a way we can merge both lobbying and grant writing together? So, you know, there's not, like, for example, it's like, you know, buying a computer from Apple that's already built the software and the hardware goes hand in hand. You know, so would it, would that, I mean, could they potentially be where they work on lobbying and grant writing together for the same price? And also, because they would know the specifications when they're writing that grant writing to meet the lobbying, you know, specification. So that's one thing. Also, could we also develop a list of projects that the city needs? Like, for example, they mentioned California Department of Transportation. We have the 110 freeway. People exit off the 110 freeway on Redondo Beach Boulevard. There's, you know, that, like, empty piece of land. It's not, it's unincorporated Los Angeles, maybe even, you know, lobbying with LA County Board of Supervisors on, you know, implementing some sort of, like, maybe something with, even with the state, like beautifying that off ramp. It really affects our city. The Vermont train tracks, maybe even having a small business meet and greet symposium to ask what businesses may need, you know, to thrive. Also, a library. We need a library in Northern Gardena. So that's, that's one thing. We definitely need park space and a library in Northern Gardena. So that's something I would want the city to have. So, you know, those are some ideas that I would suggest. So, you know, thank you so much.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, do we have any more speakers?
No, we, no, we do not, Madam.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any more questions or comments at this time? No? Okay. So at this time, I'm going to ask, where am I? Right here, 13B. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the contract with Townsend Public Affairs.
I'm moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Madam City Clerk, a motion was made by Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka and a second by myself. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cascanian?
No.
Okay, and Councilmember Francis?
No.
Thank you. Okay, next up is item number 15A.
Mayor Serta, members of the City Council, agenda item 15A, award professional services contract for the Redondo Beach Boulevard arterial improvement project. Job number 945, the Cannon Corporation, and the amount of $520,985. The 2.1 mile stretch of Redondo Beach Boulevard, from Crenshaw Boulevard to Vermont Avenue, has the second highest traffic volume in our city. The area is predominantly commercial and one of the most progressive areas, yet the vast majority are two-way left-turn lanes in the center. These TWLTL, short for the two-way left-turn lanes, combined with hundreds of driveways for the commercial areas encourages a lot of turning movements, which severely comprises, compromises safety. The quality of, of traffic operation for the nine intersections within the project limits continue to deteriorate with low traffic backups originating from three intersections. Vehicle movement is intended and subpoenaed not only during the morning and afternoon peak hours, but also during lunch hour. To improve traffic flow, reduce congestion, and enhance safety, Public Works Department applied for grants to address a worsening situation on Redondo Beach Boulevard. In August 2020, LA County Metro Metropolitan Transportation Authority, or LACMTA, awarded the city the design and construction grant for improvements along Redondo Beach Boulevard for $5,567,000. Council subsequently approved budget appropriation of this project on April 13, 2021. An RFP was drafted and distributed to engineering firms throughout California, utilizing the Information Management System platform to specialize in government project notifications. Staff also contacted five design engineering consultants on the city's current on-call services list. The proposals were required to be submitted in two separate sealed envelopes, one with the firm's qualifications and the other with the firm's fee proposal. On January 10, 2022, four sets of proposals were received and were evaluated purely based on qualifications, while the fee proposals were reviewed after, after the rating was completed. The Director of Public Works, the Principal Engineer, and Associate Engineer evaluated the written proposals using the weighted criteria that includes team member experience, qualifications, project understanding, schedule, relevant project experiences, responses, scope of services, and level of effort, and familiarity with the city's existing system. Cannon Corporation was rated the highest. They assembled a team of engineers and architects that will be able to achieve the goal set forth for this project. And their design services include traffic signal upgrade and reconfiguration, traffic geometry reconfiguration through introduction of new mediums and additional travel lanes, asphalt and concrete pavement rehabilitation, rehabilitation of concrete sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and ramps, landscaping, irrigation, and public outreach. Cannon Corporation and their subconsultants have previously completed successful design projects and several street improvements for the City of Gardena, and is familiar with the city's standards and requirements. After the rating, the fee proposals were opened for all four firms ranging from $512,707 to $695,723. Cannon Corporation submitted the second lowest fee in the amount of $520,985. Staff respectfully recommends that council approve a professional service contract in a form approved by the city attorney to Cannon Corporation for the Redondo Beach Boulevard arterial improvement project, job number 945, in the amount of $520,985. Financial impact is as follows. Approved grant budget amount is $5,567,000. Adopted city budget amount is $2,836,000 for fiscal years 2020, 2021, and 21, 22. The funding source is measured and multi-year subregional program. What is required tonight is to award professional services contract.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the council have any questions or comments? No? Okay, Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on any items? I'm sorry, on this item here?
I'm sorry. Oh, no, we do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay. That being said, can I get a motion to approve the professional service contract?
Well, actually, before, before you did that, I'm sorry, I was sleepless switch. I just have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'd looked at the, the project. So this one went out, there was, was requested fund proposal. This was a company, we've never used this company before?
I am not aware that we have used them before. If I could have Director Rig come on and see if he, he could shed some light as far as we've used Cannon before.
Hey, Alan. Hey. Yes, Mr. City Manager, we've used them several times. They performed very, very well. I believe they did the design of Artesia, and they've done some construction management for us as well. So, yeah, they've been a solid firm that have performed for us several times.
Okay, all righty. And I was just kind of curious as, you know, when, and I know Director Rig, you just, you haven't been on our staff for a long time, but I was wondering, because we kind of, you know, there's one project we'll approve and then there'll be a few months later or whatever, there'll be another. Is there any way that we can just get a, a whole strategic plan? Or is there one in existence and we're just kind of proving, going step by step and proving the funding for it or?
That's, that's a, that's a good question. The, the issue is that we do have a very methodical procedure to maintain our streets within our pavement management plan. We go out to two project, or for two projects each, and one for arterials, one for local streets each year. That is, is very coordinated, and we do those projects together to get economy and scale savings. What happens with some of these grant-funded programs, and several years ago, the city was very aggressive and obtained quite a few large grants, including Artesia Boulevard, which we're working on, Vermont, Redondo Beach Boulevard, and a couple other projects, is that they all have different funding sources and different requirements, different coordination with other agencies. And particularly what we found, I know we've talked about UPRR a little bit, but also trying to deal with City of LA, County of LA, Caltrans, such as that Redondo Beach project will touch both county as well as City of LA. So we need to work with all of them. So these projects get so, so complicated with the coordination with the agencies, the scope, the intent, and, and the different, primarily the coordination we need to do, that they all take different amounts, different amount of time. This project may take two to three years to come to actual construction because of all the public involvement. This one in particular, shutting off left-turn pockets into businesses is, is not necessarily the most popular thing to do, but strategically if done right, it'll work out very well. So we have a long public engagement process. There's also a lot of coordination with the traffic signals and a significant amount of work there. So the timing on these projects, they can all take different amount of time. So we try to keep our, our, our gas tax, our SB1 funds, all, all those for our annual projects. But these grant-funded ones are so complicated, they will come in at different times to you.
But, but there's, there's no way to have oh, just, just overall strategic plan, because I guess, I guess my concern is as, as we go without a, a whole plan or, or say a five-year plan or that we can't look ahead to future grant, grant sources. And they eventually will get so much done and then we'll just kind of run out of money. I've seen organizations that didn't have a good strategic plan or didn't really have one, because they're kind of going bit by bit. And some, some of the improvements got done and some of it didn't, simply because they just ran out of money. There wasn't any, enough foresight or future outlook to say, well, this is what we're going to need. Let's start looking for some money now. So the money will be there when we, when we need it.
Yeah, we have, we have, we, I'll be honest, we have a very well-funded street program that will keep our streets in very good shape for quite a, quite a, for as long as we can see. But when these grants come up, they were opportunities that just augmented our base plan. So we do have a base plan to keep our streets in very, very good condition. But we can get free money, such as this grant. It frees up some of our other monies to do other things. Some of our, our road funds come in and we can do staff time. We can do all sorts of other items. So it, it replaces other funding and augments it. So we can't plan for these opportunities, can't plan when they're going to come up. We can't plan if we're going to get them or not. But it is an augmentation of our base pavement management plan, which does have that very methodical approach to keep our streets in very, very good condition. This just puts us even in, in better shape and replaces other funding.
Councilmember Francis, to answer your question, these, these projects are in two, two different plans. The first one is the CIP plan, which is Capital
two different plans. The first one is the CIP plan, which is Capital Improvement Pro, uh, Project Plan. They are located in the two-year budget. We readopt these budgets annually. So we're now coming up on the, another two-year cycle. Uh, in the back of the budget book, you'll see a CIP plan that'll list all of these different projects that are coming into fruition now. As Alan said, uh, it may take two to three years for these things to really materialize and work on, but it is in our forecast, so we know exactly what we're going to be needing in, in the future. The other side is the strategic plan. Um, we have a strategic plan that addresses all of the different departments, um, that addresses all the different needs that we have for the city. Um, as we mentioned, uh, as an example, our parks master plan that the Director, uh, Alan Rig is, is working on, that'll show every single infrastructure need that we have for all of our different, uh, parks, uh, locations. So that we know, uh, in three years, four years, five years and 10 years, what are we going to tackle? And so the next step of that is to secure funding. Um, you know, how do we, how do we secure funding for a project that's going to be five, six, seven years from now? That's how we plan that and it's in the budget cycles, in the budget book.
I was just listening to the, the, uh, previous conversation about, uh, earmarks and all of this, and since we do have this plan, uh, perhaps this is an opportunity for us to jump on it now.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay, that being said, oh, that, um, Madam City Clerk, did I ask you already if, uh, anybody from the public?
I don't recall, but we don't.
Okay. That being said, um, can I get a, a motion to award the professional service contract for the Redondo Beach Artorial Improvement Project, uh, to Cannon Corporation in the amount of $520,985?
I move.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka and a second by myself. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka.
Yes.
Mayor Sirda.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Henderson, I'm sorry, I did not hear your answer.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number 18A, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Sirda, members of the City Council, Jen, item 18A is a, uh, it's a discussion of current delegate an alternate appointment to the following outside city committee, which is Southern California Association of Governments. The Southern California Association of Governments or SCAG is requesting information regarding the city's Gordina's delegate, uh, alternate, delegate and alternate representatives for the SCAG's 57th Annual Regional Conference General Assembly. The 2022 SCAG General Assembly will take place on Thursday, May 5th, 2022. Once a year, all delegates and alternates from all SCAG cities are invited to attend the annual general assembly. Councilmember Mark Henderson is the current City of Gordina delegate for SCAG and Councilmember Art Cascanian is the current alternate for SCAG. Staff, uh, request the City Council to discuss the current representatives to this SCAG and confirm the appointments. There's no financial impact. What's required tonight is approved council assignment to the outside city committee, the Southern California Association of Governments.
Okay, um, Mr. City Manager, can I just go ahead and open this up or do you have more that you want to?
Oh, no, that's it, Madam.
Okay, so I, I guess maybe this is the part I was a little confused on. Councilmember Henderson, you're the current member right now. Um, do you want to continue staying the member or do you want to switch it up?
Uh, I want to continue because I'm trying to work something through.
Okay.
I would love to continue.
Okay, and Councilmember Cascanian, would she like to continue being the alternate or do you want to switch it up?
I'm, I'm fine with it too. I'll continue.
Okay, and, um, is there any other discussion? Anybody else have?
I, I was just gonna, I was just gonna make the comment that, uh, uh, Mark has, uh, the, the rep for SCAG, um, he's, um, he's very well-known in SCAG, but he's also known, uh, throughout the COG, uh, in California cities and people continually express the things that he's doing for them. And, uh, his reputation precedes himself, so I, I just was going to say that he should probably continue.
Okay.
So do we have to nominate?
So I need a motion from you guys to, uh, reappoint Councilman Henderson as the representative and Councilman Art Cascanian as the alternate for SCAG.
So, well, well, hold on, guys. I, I want to make sure we nominate him too. Okay, so, um, here's the other question here I have and, and work with me because I'm moving a little slow, uh, on this one here. This is the same thing that Jackie, uh, uh, Bacher?
No, that's the COG.
That's the COG, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, that's where I was getting these two confused here. Okay, so I understand everything now. Now, somebody, I don't know, it seemed like everybody jumped up and wanted to nominate Mark, so who wants to officially be the one to do it? Okay, so Councilwoman Francis.
I'll second.
Uh, just nominating, uh, Councilmember Mark Henderson, um, as the, uh, what is it, the delegate and the alternate will be, uh, continue to be Councilmember, uh, Art Cascanian. So, uh, motions made by Councilmember Francis and the second was by Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka. So, Madam City Clerk, will you, um, call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francis. Yes, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes, and thank you for your continued faith in me. I'm humble.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes, and thank you, Mark, doing the job and not calling me to back you up.
And Mayor Sirda.
Yes, so continue making us proud, so, okay. All right then. That being said, let's move on to council directors. Does any member of the council have any directors at this time? Uh, let's start with Councilwoman Francis and then Councilwoman Cascanian.
All right, I still, um, have a concern about the business at, with the, um, vacant lot at El Segundo and Crenshaw. Most of the trash is gone, but, um, who? Since they're not using those, those waste containers and there's still graffiti on, on the walls and uh, the fence looks, looks like someone might be going in there. Who is responsible for moving that trailer and the, um, the, the, um, waste bins? There's two big waste bins, orange, well, actually three, there's two orange ones, one blue one. There's a, a empty trailer, a container, and there's also two, um, barrels, two storage cans. I don't know what's in them. They look like, uh, the kind of storage barrels that they may have been, they might have been used to, uh, clear off some hazardous waste or something. But they, this place has been like this for, like I said, we approved this project almost a year ago and I don't understand, um, why our, um, what, what else can we do to make sure that they get the graffiti? It's, it's one of our, it's right there, El Segundo and Crenshaw. I have to stop there every day at the red light. Look at that.
Sorry, were you waiting for a second or, Mr. City Manager, did you?
No, I just, I just have a question, a second or, or something. I'm, I'm not quite sure, uh, how?
I mean, I, I, I'll, I'll second that. I mean, because it's, I know it's, it's, I mean, I know it's like a code enforcement issue kind of thing. Um, and I think it's just a matter of us getting in contact with the owner or something, because I think the owner should swish. It's, it's, it's another owner involved. Or some, something to that effect, so.
So at this time, what we can do is, is keep on citing them for, um, you know, the violations that they may have. But the, the, the real issue here, and that's why it's stagnated, is because there is a change of ownership. Um, they've got to go through the process, the escrow, et cetera, et cetera. So until then, you know, you're right. I mean, there's some issues, um, you know, with the, the property and it's stagnated because of the transfer of ownership.
But you say still, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
I was just asking if it's still in, if it's still in the escrow, then until the kind of documents are signed, it's still the responsibility of the, the owner.
Whoever is the, the current owner would be their responsibility and we would keep on, um, visiting them and, and citing them if, if the violation is not corrected, so.
Penalty or, no?
Yeah, I mean, up to, and up to, you know, financial penalties if needed, depending on how many times they've been cited and, uh, you know. So at, at this time, we can, we can keep on watching them and, and see if the, the violation is continuing.
Councilmember Francis, I'm reaching out right now to the attorney who handled, um, this project on behalf of the developer. I'm asking him who the current owner is and letting them know that the property needs to be cleaned up. So hopefully we can get some further information that way as well.
And I appreciate that because at the, uh, at last meeting, you said that, um, we have the right in conditions to make sure that future projects would be maintained.
This project should be being maintained and, uh, I will have, in addition to the email, I will call Mr. Ram tomorrow. I'll need to take care of this.
Thank you. And just, just one other question, um, the status of the Chase Building? Where are we in that, that process? I've, I've had some, uh, some of my neighbors ask me about what's going on there. There is a fence around it. I'm glad to see that because it keeps, uh, kind of protects our, our, our investment there. So where are we now in the process?
So, uh, as you know, we've, we've retained ownership of the, the, the Chase property. Uh, as, as you mentioned, we, we put a fence around it to make it secure. At this point, we're engaged with, uh, an architect to, uh, an engineer to determine. See, the, the, the thing is with that Chase, uh, uh, property, there's a one component of that property that is very, very valuable and that's the basement. So we are trying to figure out, and engineering and architects are trying to figure out if there is a way for us to save the, the basement and for what uses. Now, it's not just a matter of saving the basement, um, because we're going to build above it, there's going to be some structural questions that are going to be, uh, that needs to be answered. And that's what we're doing. We're spending a little bit of time and money right now so that if we can, uh, uh, save that, that component, it's a huge win for the city because you don't have to build it. Because you know, building basements is extremely, uh, expensive and it's there now and if we can save it, um, you know, because demolishing the building is relatively easy. You just go down there with, with, you know, demolition crew and they'll, they'll knock it down. But then, you know, we wouldn't be able to save the, the basement. And that's the, really the, the, the thing that's delaying the whole process. Otherwise, we'd be knocking that thing down already and, and starting the, the process.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with, I know the City of Engwood converted, um, an old bank building versus a Burger King and now it's the, the youth orchestra is, is, uh, the cycle youth orchestra. And I believe they did maintain the basement.
Uh-huh.
But yeah, so.
There, there is a possibility, uh, for us to do that. There's also a big, uh, safe that's incorporated into the building. So we're trying to figure out if, if that's something that, you know, we can possibly retain and, and make it into something that is interesting for the community to, to see and use, you know, it's, it's a full, full-on walk-in safe with a big safe, just like what you would see in, in, in a bank. And so we're, we're, we're doing that. Rest assured, we're trying to move as fast as we can. We just want to make sure that we, we explore everything so we can at least save that basement if we can.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Did a directive or, did, did you get the information you needed or?
Yes, I got the information I need. There's, there's, there's no, I don't find a place for me to uh, get information, ask questions and, and find out things. And if it's, you know, sounds like something that, uh, a second or becomes a directive, that's, that's fantastic for me, but, um, or for us, anyway, so.
Okay.
But if you, if anybody wanted to make turn it to recommend.
No, I think we're okay. Um, any other directors at this time? Uh, Councilmember Henderson.
I thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just kind of speaking to our environmental justice element in our digital equity profile as far as the, the low-hanging fruit, uh, providing Wi-Fi in our parks. So I know through the COG, from, through the COG, through Metro, we've done our South Bay fiber network as much as we can in the city, but I was wondering if we could figure out what the remaining pieces would be to just, at the MLK parade, I was just thinking about that, to at least get the wireless going in that park as a pilot to see what we can do to get that going. Because I know we now have the cable and we just have to figure out a smart way to make sure we have secured wireless for the community. And if we start in that park, it then should be easier in some of the smaller parks. So I was wondering if we could kind of finish that up. And then it starts to speak to the, some of the items in our EJ Element report as we start wanting to correct some of that.
Do you need a second for that, uh, Councilmember Henderson?
Yes, please.
I'll second it.
Mark, um, well, maybe, Mr. City Manager, when you check in this directive, could you maybe give, uh, Jackie Becker of the COG a call? Because at one point, they said they still have, uh, some fiber available that they were looking for places to put it in. So I'm not sure if it's still available, but that might be a, a partial solution to that.
Will do.
One more, Madam Mayor, one more. And this, and this is more or less an FYI for all of us. So the fans have, uh, I was probably in the second district, and some of the resources they made available, a discussion around the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act funding and all those resources and money going around. Since we've approved TPA, Mr. City Manager, would be, would it be wise for us to point them also in that direction to make sure we can get what we can get out of the IIJA to start supporting some of our other infrastructure needs as far as, uh, uh, electric charging stations or something like that? Mission on new community center, aquatic center and all that. And this is more of an FYI. I don't need a second for that, but I want to put that on everybody's radar.
Uh, certainly.
Okay.
Any more directors? Go ahead, all right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I was, I, I've been driving back and forth on Western Avenue and 135th and I noticed that there was some, uh, water pipe was the replacement. So I don't know if it burst or it was just the maintenance. Burst?
Burst.
Yeah. So anyhow, they fixed it, it looks like, and they covered it up and, uh, the, the pavement that they did, it looks like you need a four-by-four to go through it. It's not even, it's like rough, like a train. So is there any way we can have, you know, I don't know if that's final pavement on it or they are going to come back and fix it or not, but it looks terrible, the pavement over there.
So let me just give you a quick update here. Um, on Sunday afternoon, there was like a water main line that burst and the whole area was flooded. And I had the pleasure of driving through it, but, um, Golden State got out there really quick and it must have been a major water main that broke because, I mean, when I say it was flooded, it was really, really flooded, the whole intersection there. Um, and you could literally see the ground where it kind of came up and all the water coming through, but, um, I'm going to take a stab in the dark and assume it's temporary. Maybe the City Manager of Public Works can explain more and later on, what a director would have reported and let us know what's going to be permanent or not. But that is, it was a water main line that broke. And I'll second that. If you want a director with a follow-up as far as.
Yes, please.
I think they have an obligation to make it as, as close as the original as possible. And that's, they have to do that.
Yeah, it is really rough, rough, rough.
Okay. So there's a second. We'll get a direct, we'll have some information probably back with that. Any other directors? No? Okay, let's move on to our, um, what is this, uh, City Manager remarks regarding our previous directives.
Mayor Sirda, members of the City Council, um, I don't have any update as far as previous directives. Uh, we do have a short video from Record Human Services, uh, while we queue that up, like to read the following. Um, February 26th, 2022, the city was able to welcome back the Martin Luther King Parade honoring the legacy of one of the most memorable leaders in the civil rights movement. In addition to the parade, we held the Battle of Bass and Afternoon in the Park. It was a wonderful day and we are thankful for all the participants, visitors and community members that came to the event. Special thank you to the MLK Cultural Committee for their continued effort to keeping the dream alive. We're also, we also hosted a fun painting party at Johnson Park for seniors. We were joined by a police department who was there to educate our seniors and prevent them from being victims of fraud. This is one of the many community events co-sponsored by the Gordina Police Foundation to focus on expanding their impact in the community. And follow us on social media, Nextdoor, and, uh, join our email list to stay in the know, uh, to attend, uh, participate in future upcoming events. I think we have, uh, video probably ready by now. Um, the video is going to have, um, the, the scheduled events that, that we're going to be having, um, in the, in the future, but I do want to, um, quickly mention them. Uh, State of the City is this Thursday, March 10th, 2022 at 7:00 PM, City Hall Front Lawn. The Seonor Night is on Friday, March 11th, 2022, from 4:00 PM to 8:30 PM at the City Hall Lawn. Paint in the Park is Friday, March 17th, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM at Raleigh Park. The 46th Annual Coin Show is on Saturday, March 19th and Sunday, March 20th, at the City Hall Complex. And the Healthy Pet Clinic, uh, Sunday, May 15th to 20th. And the Healthy Pet Clinic, Sunday, May 15, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the NACO Community Center. All right. Thank you very much, Record Human Services and the entire city for putting on such a great event, specifically the MLK Parade. That was a very, very memorable event. And lastly, Mayor Serna, members of the City Council, I do want to greet all the women in our city, our county, our, our country, and in the world, a happy International Women's, Women's Day. Just like to read a quick quote here from their website. Imagine a gender, imagine a gender equal world, a world free of bias, stereotypes, and discrimination, a world that's diverse, equitable, and inclusive, a world where difference is valued and celebrated. Together, we can forge women's equality collectively. We can all break the bias. And Madam Mayor, that ends my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to council remarks now. Tonight, we're going to begin with Councilmember Francis.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since our, our last council meeting, I participated at the Homeless Count, and, and I had a great team with Mr. Richard Luna. We drove around at our precinct, our census area. And I'm anxious to see what the results are from that effort. I want to thank everybody that came out for that, all the volunteers. And our council members as well. Thank you so much for being there, supporting. And then I also attended the 39th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Parade and, and the Afternoon in the Park. I also had the opportunity to emcee and be the parade announcer, as I had done in previous years. It was a lot of fun. It really was a great parade. We had over 100 groups, 1,000, 1,000 participants. I know that the committee had 2,000 ribbons printed up, and we don't have any left at all, so they all went. But I just want to give some thank yous out right now for that particular event. Not only was it the parade, but it's also an afternoon in the park for our Black History Month celebration. And first of all, let me thank Keith O'Derrick, one of our former community grand marshals, who is also a videographer. He videotaped the parade for us and placed it on YouTube. So he videotaped four hours of parade, two hours of parade, and chopped it down to 30 minutes, and you can see it on YouTube. I want to thank Director Riggs of Public Works and staff for making sure Van Ness Avenue was ready and clear, and so we could have a nice street to walk down on, bring the parade down. I want to also thank Director Stephanie Santin and staff for the outstanding job they did for coordinating both events. This is the first time in a long, many, many years that we've had the Afternoon in the Park and the parade as well. So it's a huge undertaking. And I want to give a special thank you to, now you're all specials, Parks and Recreation Staff, but I just want to give a special thank you to Nikki Sweeney and Amber and Emily for helping as well, and all the extra effort that they did. But let me tell you, if you pinned a ribbon or walked along the parade, set up a table, moved a chair, set the stage up, make sure the mics were working, all that, my sincere appreciation for all that you've done. You really, really, on that particular Saturday, as in all Saturdays, you, you made Gardena shine. And so I, for that, I thank you. Also want to thank Mr. Michael Romero and Ms. Martinez. Ms. Romero is the superintendent of the Gardena Community Schools. And our Gardena Community Schools represented, there was a school for every, there was a representative for every school. All our schools represented in the parade, and we have some wonderful schools. We have, I think it's 153rd Street, that has Korean Dual Emergent Program. We have dual emerging education. Our essay contest winners were there, so, and I, as I announced over the, during the parade, you know, you don't have to leave Gardena to give your child a great education. We have some great schools within our Gardena Community Schools. So I thank you all for your participation. And see if I missed anybody. Oh, save the date for next year, January 13 through January 14, 2023 will be our next Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. Hope to see you all out, so save the date. And let me see, am I missing anything? Oh, and the Battle of Bands, Coach Dennis, Gardena High School was the, the, again, the winner of the Battle of the Bands. Now, you may say, well, they were the only ones, because the other bands left, they had to leave. But even if they had not, Coach Dennis and Gardena High School and their band director, the auxiliary, absolutely wonderful. Last year, they, they did, the Gardena Auxiliary had the theme of Wakanda. This year, they did Among Us. And young people, you know what I'm talking about, but they were absolutely wonderful. And the Battle of Bands was a fantastic program. The whole day was just a wonderful, wonderful celebration. And thank you to everybody that has supported us across the years. Our, our council members were there, Mayor Serna was there. Thank you so much for being there and supporting, as always. And we look forward to seeing you next year. And Happy International Women's Day. Imagine a day when, or time when everybody is celebrated and differences are valued. Just imagine that day. And although we're still in the middle, coming out of the pandemic, continue to do what you're doing to keep you and your family safe. And as I always say, remember, better days are ahead. Better days are coming. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next up is Mayor Proton Tana.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So since our last, I did participate with the Homeless Count. Thanks to our city staff and our police department for making sure that that happened, along with our great CERT people. I think the way we did it on our phones was a lot easier than it was in the past. Was, it was just an easier way to keep count of how many were out there. So thank you to those. Attended my South Bay COG Board Meeting, attended the MLK Parade, and I'm telling you, it was the biggest, best one that I have ever been to at, at, at the city. It was just a great day. We even had horses. We've never had horses. So great job, Stephanie, for changing up the venue, putting everybody in the park, which is a great thing, and we thank all your staff for their hard work. Attended my homeless task force with the, with the COG, and one of the homeless advocates actually thanked us because she was at our homeless count, and she said that our people did a really great job, and so they said to be proud of, of the participation. So thank you all. Attended my California Cities membership meeting at the Sheraton Universal. It was quite a drive. But they talked about the redistricting of our political venues, and it was it was, it was quite an eye-opener on how the redistricting actually ended up and why it ended up the way it was. So thanks to CalCities for a great presentation. Went to Johnson Park and participated with the Senior Paint Day, and I'm going to tell you what, some of those seniors can really, really paint. There were some awesome paintings that were out there. You could probably, you put it on a swap meet, you'd go out and buy them for 25 or 30 bucks. That's how good they were. But thanks to the city staff again, and the police department for sharing that day with them. And thanks to Captain Osorio, because he came out and it was his birthday. So, you know, that's our city staff. They come out even when it's their celebration. So thanks. All the seniors saying happy birthday to them. And I think, lastly, I just want to express that. The City Manager said International Women's Day, and if you look at the city of Gardena, we have many, many, many women that are just awesome. They do a great job for us. They do many things for us, and we should be proud of the women that do work for our city. So thank you very much for all that you guys do, and happy international. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Councilmember Cascanian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since our last meeting, I also attended the Homeless Counts. And thanks for everybody and to all our volunteers that they came and volunteered their time late nights. And also attended the MLK Parade. It was a great parade. I'll tell you this, it was one of the best, as Mayor Proton mentioned, that, you know, and it's the longest, I would say, too. Lot of participants and the horses and all kinds of cars, and the cars are bouncing, dancing, all kinds, everything. But it was great. It was great. I want to thank you, Councilmember Francis, and please relay my thank you to your committee, MLK Committee too. So they did a great job. And I want to thank Stephanie and her staff for putting everything together. And thank you for the police departments keeping us safe, closing the roads, and whoever anticipated. Thank you, everybody. It was a great parade. And Madam Mayor, I also, I would like to say my condolences to our City Clerk, Samantha. Her brother-in-law passed away, Michael, and my condolences, Mina, for your brother-in-law. And please relay my condolences to your sister, Marissa Castelucci. So may he rest in peace, and that's end my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. For myself, since last council meeting, I too attended the Homeless Count, and I was very happy to see the number of people who came out to volunteer. So that was a really good thing. And I don't remember which council member mentioned it before me, but one of you guys recognized CERT members who were there. And that's a group that, gosh, they are so awesome as far as every time there's anything volunteer-wise where it's needed, and they are just a great group. CERT is a community emergency response training group. And they're organized, they come out, and they're just available to help in whatever way they can. So I too am very thankful that they came out because they've done this several times before. And it's always great when you can go out with an experienced person, especially if you don't know what to do. And they were even great during, when they were first giving out the vaccine, they were able to assist down at the forums. So they're a great resource to have in our city, and they can mobilize very quickly. So once again, happy for everybody who volunteered and participated in the Homeless Count. Also, since the last council meeting, I attended unfortunately another funeral of an LA County Fire Captain. His name was Steve McCain, and I want to add his name to the, to the remembrances tonight. Fortunately, he passed away at the, at the age of 48, so I attended the memorial services for him. I also attended the MLK Parade, and you know, once again, just want to, you know, thank the entire committee, Councilwoman Francis, as a chairperson. You guys did an amazing job. And if I'm not mistaken, it's only, I want to say a few, I don't mean to minimize this, but it's less than 10 people, I believe, on the committee. Is that correct? And to see the amount of work that you guys did, it just goes to show how well thought out that was and well planned. And this was probably one of the biggest parades, as I've seen, and I've been participating over 20 years now. And most of the time, some of the parades were done in an hour, you know, realistically speaking, but this one went on for a good two hours. And it was a lot of different things to see between the horses, the race car. I mean, it was a little bit of everything. And so I think at the end of the day, everybody was, was oohing and aahing about how exciting it was. So special thanks to your committee members, and please let them know how much the city of Gardena, we appreciate them. And I like the fact that not only are they one of our, our, our culture committees that, that we work with, but you guys work very well with our staff. And I appreciate the staff for what they do too. And it just goes to show when everybody gets together, how great things can be and how seamless it can be. Because if there was any errors or anything that went on the day, you never would have known because everything went very smoothly. And at the end of the day, I think the community loved it more than ever. So once again, good job to everybody involved with that. Also, I had the pleasure of meeting a gold medalist who came to the city of Gardena. Her name was Kaylee Humphries, and she's a two-time gold medalist in bobsledding. And she decided to come here and do some social media advertising with Raising Canes. And I got like a last-minute phone call, and they said, hey, do you want to meet a gold medalist? And I was like, sure, here I am. And so it was really awesome to meet her, and I'm glad she picked the city of Gardena, and especially Raising Canes. And she was awesome, just meeting with all the young people there. And it was just a real spur-of-the-moment kind of thing, where she came there and her whole social media advertising team. And she got in line, and she ordered food, she got behind a register, she even worked the drive-through for a few minutes. And I think people were just really surprised, not only to see her, but to see her actual gold medal. And I got the opportunity just to hold it, and I'll probably never in my life ever get that opportunity to hold a gold medal, but it's a lot heavier than you think. So it was really exciting to see that. I also participated in a birthday drive-by for a Gardena resident who turned 102 years old. And I'd just like to send a special thank you to our Gardena Police Officers. There were so many cars out there. And I actually have it on my social media, if anybody wants to go and go back and watch it, but we had our police officers out there. LA County Fire Department came out there, and I want to just give a special thanks to firefighter Elliot Hoffman, because at the last minute, the, the birthday girl, her daughter asked him, hey, is it by chance, can you get a fire truck out there? And he made it happen really quickly. So I just want to give him a special, special thank you. And the captains who were so determined to get out there. And, you know, a lot of times these, uh, police and fire, they get called different directions for different causes and so. They get called different directions for different calls and so on, but they were determined that they were going to be out there for, um, for, um, her name was Esther Barbic, to be out there for her and she was so thrilled. All she kept saying is, I can't believe this. Oh my gosh, this is for me? And she kept saying, and they were, they had the, the sirens going and the horns and everything and she, you could just see the tears in her eyes. She was so amazed and it was so much going on in that short ten minutes that it actually put her to sleep afterwards. So she, she had a great day. Um, and then also, um, earlier today, um, I had the opportunity to, uh, meet with the CEO of Nissan Foods. Um, Nissan, uh, one of our big, um, manufacturers, uh, of, uh, top ramen noodles, cup of noodles. Uh, they donated ten pallets, uh, to LA Regional Food Bank and as you know, LA Regional Food Bank, they feed those who are in need as well as they donated to the city of Gardena and, uh, they wanted me to come by and just know what they're doing as far as helping out. And so it was really great to just to be in there and just to see a big organization like that giving back to those who are in need. And, um, I got the opportunity to take a tour of, uh, Nissan and I had no idea they made so many different products. And it was really interesting to see their, their, um, forklifts were just moving non-stop. They said, you won't believe how busy we are and how we just can't keep, uh, cup of noodles are just flying off the shelves because that's a thing to eat. So it's awesome to know that we have a company here in Gardena that feeds pretty much the whole, uh, southern region, um, of the United States. So, um, that was awesome to be there. And then lastly, um, I mentioned it earlier about the water mainline that, that broke, uh, in the city on Sunday. Um, want to send just a special, uh, thanks to, uh, Public Works. Those guys were out there so quickly trying to do what they could have fixed it. I think later on, I saw Golden State Water come out there. I'm sure it was probably their fault, their problem, but nevertheless, our people were out there. They were trying to fix it. Um, Gardena PD, they were out there. So I just like to send, uh, just a special, uh, thank you to them for just doing their best that they could just to deviate traffic around there and fix that problem as quickly as they could. And I know I said that was the last thing, but the very last thing, I just want to once again remind everybody, our state of the cities is coming Thursday. Um, I, uh, I'm excited to talk about, to the community. I mean, all of you know this, but to share with everybody some of the new things that are coming to Gardena. And, uh, I think it's going to be, uh, a great time for all of us there. Probably one of our first events that we're going to have now, we're going to be open back to, uh, the community here. So with that, that is my report and next up is Councilmember Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief since the hour is long, but I do also want to give kudos to the, uh, MLK Committee, Cultural Committee. That was a great parade. It rivaled any other parade in any other city in our region. And the fact that our city staff was able to be very ambidextrous and have two events in the same day because it was two events. It was the parade and it was the afternoon in the park. And we pulled that off, uh, without a hitch. So that was awesome. Uh, went to all my, you know, biz fag, scag meetings and all that. Uh, one of the highlights I had since our last meeting was doing the participating read across America and everything. So that was a fun event. I read at a hundred and eighteenth Street Elementary School, had my Dr. Seuss hat on and everything. It was great. Uh, nothing like getting questions, having a question and answer session with TK, first graders and fourth graders and everything. They, they got some great questions. So we got a lot of future leaders, uh, in our Nissan, in our community. I also met with, uh, Kip, the Generations Academy, uh, new school in our community. I want to alert my colleagues that I did commit us all at one time or another to come visit their site and talk to their students about leadership and development and stuff like that. I think, Madam Mayor, I said you'd love to come twice, so.
Thank you for volunteering.
I volunteered. You'd love to come twice. Uh, I also have been in communication with the second district in regards to sustainability and some of the things we can do in our community to kind of really up our sustainability profile. We're doing some good stuff. We want to keep on going. Uh, Mr. City Manager, if you could give kudos to all your department heads, uh, Madam City Attorney, Madam Assistant City Attorney. Uh, they, they tolerate my discussions and ideas when I catch them one-on-one and talk about different things as we figure out how to formulate, uh, a future going forward. So in your staff meeting, don't beat them up too hard, but make sure they don't get a big head. We got to stay humble and keep on going and everything. And I also want to thank this body, my colleagues for pushing a a really aggressive and proactive agenda for us to change this community with a lot of the things that we've been doing. So it, it's a testament to the vision that we have and where we see our community going where some of the things that we're, uh, deploying and implementing, we probably won't even be around to benefit from, but we're, we're showing that we're thinking about our community in the future. So I want to thank you all for your leadership in that. Again, I can't, uh, stress enough, Happy International Women's Day. Women are the best. They are the mothers of us all. None of us would be here without women. So we want to make sure we pay homage and understand that. And in our quiet moments tonight, let's please pray for peace in this world. We got a lot of, um, a lot of upheaval going on. A lot of people are being, uh, disenfranchised in Ukraine. Folks are, uh, participating in war. They have nothing to do with it. They're refugees. Uh, their lives have been turned upside down. We want to make sure we pay, pray for peace. Uh, Madam Mayor, so ends my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, just a couple of, uh, announce, well, actually only just one announcement here. Um, we have, um, remind everybody that we're going to have a special election on April the fifth. Um, Assembly District sixty-two, which is a special primary election. It's going to be April fifth, twenty twenty-two. The purpose of this election, um, the April fifth, twenty twenty-two Assembly District sixty-two, uh, special primary election was called by California Governor Gavin Newsom to fill the vacancy in the sixty-second Assembly District. Uh, the seat was previously held by the Honorable Autumn Burke. Uh, voting could take place on Tuesday, April fifth, twenty twenty-two, from seven AM to eight PM at Raleigh Park Gemasium, which is located at one three two two zero Van Ness Avenue in Gardena. Uh, this election affects Gardena residents who live within District sixty-two and is for only one day. So for those residents who live north of Rosecrans, um, you can vote by mail. There will be a, uh, ballot box located right there at the park and, um, as, uh, let's see, today, if I'm not mistaken, or I'm sorry. I think it was today, not March third, the ballot box is open and so you can go ahead and start, um, soon as you get your absentee ballots, uh, you can go ahead and start voting now. So, um, that will be Tuesday, April fifth, twenty twenty-two. If you want to vote in person from seven AM to eight PM at Raleigh Park, or you can go ahead and, uh, put your ballot in the vote by mail ballot box. Okay, and, um, I also have this one flyer here that is a, uh, for those people who are looking for, um, place to get a vaccination, there's a vaccination pop-up clinic, uh, which is Friday, March the eighteenth, um, at the ADAP Corporate Office, which is located at twenty-nine hundred Crenshaw Boulevard. Um, they are offering the first, second and booster shots, the Moderna, the Pfizer and Johnson and Johnson. And, uh, for more information, you can go to register at myturn.ca.gov. So with that, we're going to move on to remembrances. Um, tonight, we're going to adjourn in memory of Michael Villa, Villa Alpando, who was sixty-one years old and the beloved husband of Arista Castellucci and brother-in-law of Nina Semenza, our Gardena City Clerk. We're also going to adjourn in memory of LA County Fire Captain Steve McCain, who was forty-eight years of age. So at this time, the Gardena City Council will adjourn to our closed, uh, session portion of our city council meeting at seven PM, followed by the regular city council meeting at seven thirty PM on Tuesday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. We are adjourned. Good night everyone.
Good night everyone.